You got it. And I think that's paper bills.
Yeah.
Did anyone else?
Oh.
Sister Ranger. Oh, does it know? Ranger, are you there? Karina, are you there?
I think that's the host of the meeting where it says her name on the left.
Oh. I thought you were going to be present. But oh my god.
I don't see anyone.
Where is this view up top? Oh, no, no. And 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 where the meeting actually is. Right up.
Oh, yeah.
All the little boxes up there.
Yeah.
I think that'll say if there's anyone else on the monitor. Actually, when I when I go to the. When I go to that little. With nine square thing and click on that little little square over up and over. Go up where your view was.
Yeah.
Go over just a little bit. Oh, the other way.
Oh, here.
Right there.
Yeah, that's what I clicked.
Once you did all that. Is that just one button of view now? Yeah. So long gallery, right?
Long gallery.
Gallery, gallery. Everywhere that's here. Maybe you should just go on here. There's nobody here on the little line. I guess I'm not here, so.
Let's report, right? It's not what they did, but reports it.
It's recording.
Audio file. Isn't that how we do the minutes?
Oh, yes, you you can get the minutes by watching the video.
Right. Oh, yeah. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order. December twenty fourth. Thankful boards here, so there'll be no alternate seating. Conservation of the meeting minutes from September tenth. I have a number of changes to that, so I'd like to put that off the left or redo the. Master plan. And the heights has. Requested to be deferred until October eighth. So. We need to make. I'll make a motion, we defer. The heights. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reviewing. Continuation until October eighth. Joseph, in favor?
I I oppose.
Okay.
Make an idea for here.
Now, one. Uh, this is the master plan kickoff meeting. See, Stephen and Elizabeth are here and Crystal.
Hi.
Crystal.
Yep.
Um, so.
All right, George. All right, thank you. So it's nice we can move on on the agenda.
Karina, can you hear us? Karina? I think you're muted. I don't think you're muted.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're muted, Karina.
Can we have to unmute her?
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, I can hear you now. Here, so we just started. Um, just saying, and we deferred our minutes. And we went through with the heights, so we're now on. Um, the best plan kickoff with Steve. Elizabeth and Crystal's here too. So just so you were up, we're red.
Okay.
All right. So we've been the.
So first of all, can you turn this microphone? Is there a battery in it?
Oh, the battery is.
Yeah, but the battery in the bottom of it, please. It's positive negative on it, yeah. Got it. Is the red light on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will it pick us up or should we hand it back and forth?
Probably hand it back and forth, because sometimes it works.
Yeah.
You know, you have to almost talk right into it like this.
Not a problem. Um, so a couple of you, we didn't get to meet last time we were here, so I'm Steve Whitman. Joined by Crystal Kidd. Is it hot? Whoops. That's off. Well. It's kind of light. It's out. But then yours won't be. How's that?
That's okay.
That's better than the other one.
I might. So, yeah.
Perfect. All right.
So do you want to tell the board? We can start from the board.
So great.
Just introduce yourself so the. Resilience.
See, there be an alternate. I agree with Brandon alternate as well.
My guy, Rochy, vice chair. George, one of the old timers, historian. Paul Logan, chair.
OJ Robinson, board selection representative.
Stevie knows where they are, not his oldest Joe. And just so you know, Karina Parks, our town manager, is on the.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, so Steve Whitman, Crystal Kidd, and Elizabeth Malloy. Um, resilient planning and design. So we now, last time we were here, was an interview. Um, it was kind of talking about the project and deciding how to go forward, and we were excited that the planning board decided to. To include us in this project. Uh, since that time, Karina's helped us get under contract. If you reviewed the contract, um, and made some amendments and work into those. Um, the fourth member of our team is Zach Barhinsky. And he lives over in Vermont, and he said to the Q budget, we bring him over just as needed. But he's doing all the GIS work, so he and Crystal will still talk about it tonight, but he. Has been in touch with Karina and has started pulling data from CNI and in fact to the SECA. So he'll be the one, when you see maps and we have data requests and you have questions, we'll pull him in. We can also have him zoom in if there are short periods of time on a meeting that we want him. Um, so that's a little bit about who the teams. And then I appreciate that we got up to the front of your meeting. Um, what we wanted to do at this meeting and what we'd like to do again at the next meeting. Is kind of giving an overview of the things that we're working on now. Um, so the beginning of. How we're thinking about outreach and engagement based on what we learned from in our short conversation last time and anything we can learn tonight. Um, and talk a little bit about. What your thoughts are, um, potentially a homework assignment, thinking about the twenty sixteen master plan. Because there was some talk about that when we first. About things that maybe were goals you want to carry forward or actions that did or didn't happen. And so this phase of the project, when we're getting up to speed, so that we can understand where you're at. And Crystal will talk part of that about the existing conditions research. Um, all the topics of a master plan, we want to pull that data in, most recent data we can find. To understand housing and transportation and all those things. And so we've started that process and we get under contract with people for projects. Um, but we'll touch on that. Um, and then. The last thing we'll touch on as part of all this will be kind of next steps for October meeting and then looking out towards December meeting and recognizing that you have other. People that want to pursue, and there will be holidays at some point very soon that we'll have to start working around. So we just want to stay ahead of that as far as scheduling. So with that, I think I'm going to hand it over to Liz, and she's going to talk a little bit about, um, some ideas that we have. On naming the initiative, which we had talked about first time we met, and there seems to be interest in doing that. This is always, uh, it seems like a very small task that becomes pretty involved. We want to spend a little time upfront, see if we can. Gravitate for the name for this initiative that will have some recognition, so when the SLAM board and others are talking about it, people will start to recognize you're all talking about the same thing. Before I say too much, isn't my foot.
Um, so I'm just going to pass out a handout to you all. Yeah, thank you, Steve, appreciate it. There could be ten copies, so enough for everyone. Um, so we almost never. Hit the mark the first time we present some possible brand name for the project. Um, the beauty of providing a short list of some potential names is that it gets everyone in the room thinking. Um, it also gets. You all, uh, it gets your gut instinct, I'm like, I hate that name. Or I like that name, like, let's tweak it a little bit, there's something there that could work. Um, you'll notice that there in general are five bullets, actually, I'm myself. Um, five bullets of potential names. Um, they include the primary name, which, for example, the first two bullets, say Lincoln twenty forty. Um, and then some potential bylines afterwards that just give a little bit more labor to, um, the initiative. Um. I'm just going to go through each of these with you. Again, they might, some might land, some might not at all. You might like the primary name of one, but hate the byline with it, so we can kind of do some mixing and matching if that feels good. It also might spark your own thinking, and you might have a totally different name that you. Um, come up with in this meeting, which we're very open to hearing. Um, and ultimately, like Steve said. A name for the initiative enables us to create some kind of project logo. Um, that people can correlate to the master plan project. Um, for example, if it's forward link in twenty forty, um, it would be a really simple logo that has the name and some kind of image that, you know, resonates or connects with. Lincoln is. Again, this is, I know can be like a much bigger conversation, but we're not designing a town deal. Um, so, you know, I think that with the thoughts in this room, as well as, you know, any like from Carol and staff that aren't here. Uh, we can come up with an image that would work and people will be able to recognize the project. Um, so you'll notice that the first two names. Um. Highlight Lincoln twenty forty, the idea being that the master plan project is typically a ten to fifteen year timeframe, looking out and planning for. Future land use growth and development of the community within that kind of future looking perspective. Um, the next ones are Lincoln looks forward, forward link in twenty forty, and livable link in twenty forty. So you can see this twenty forty kind of makes its way into a couple of options that may resonate or it may not, and that's totally up to your discussion tonight. And then we have a series of different bylines ranging from the super simple, a master plan for twenty forty, which is the one that is linked to the only primary name that doesn't have that timeframe linked into it. Um, to other bylines like planning for people in place, a vision for the future, et cetera. Um, so we brought these as an initial discussion point for you all, we'd love to bring you a draft logo. To the next meeting and have you pick that apart. Um, but it'd be great to get some guy to some, if there's any, any name that's jumping out to you, or if you hate them all, we we want to know the range. I'll be back.
Well, I'll go.
Yeah.
Um, I really like livable Lincoln twenty forty. Um, I don't know if we need the year in there, but livable Lincoln has a really nice catchy ring to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because the double L. And then I also really like the tagline, where mountains, people and opportunity meet. Um. I just like those three things, opportunity could be changed for maybe some other words.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that are descriptive, but I like mountains because. It distinguishes landscape, nature.
Yeah.
You know, recreating and then people for exactly what's here. So.
I guess I'll go next.
Yeah.
Livable Lincoln, again, twenty forty, whether in or out.
Yeah.
Uh, but a vision for the future. I think that one line actually incorporates all the other four lines.
Yeah.
Because we are having a vision for the future of Lincoln. You're going to have all of that. To the meeting, what's going on, what's building, all that together, so. I would go. Yeah.
Cool.
Can you go with Mike?
Great.
Lincoln will be the same, now that the candy. In fact, most of all would be gone.
Yeah.
Because, Lee, I don't know if you know this, Lincoln's second last town in Hampshire.
Yeah.
Only three miles wide, five miles long as usual.
Right.
On the total line, there's less than two percent that's privately owned. Down. Uh, there's two percent, less one quarter that's not built up. Half of that one quarter is unbuildable. That's why Atlanta's so. Not as much related. This, 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 this is major your fault. Your fault. Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Yes, that's it. Could be less than that.
Great, thank you, Justin, appreciate it.
I don't know, I kind of like the, uh. Sustaining what we value. Part of it. I like the, um. Lincoln twenty forty, I like the sustaining what we value because. Through all the growth of Lincoln, we've lost a lot of our.
Yeah.
Our identity.
Yeah.
And people come up here to enjoy Lincoln. And now it's gotten so much bigger that a lot of it has changed. So I don't know if there's a way to incorporate. I don't know what the exact wording would be, because I'm just sitting here now, but I mean, if I have a little more time, but. Um, I I like to keep something in there about. Retaining. Um, small town feel and where we go next. To try and keep that or something that, something that keeps. Keeps Lincoln still Lincoln without changing a whole lot. Because there's a lot, I mean. I've talked to. A number of people who have come up here, who have left here, worked for a long time residents, and and they've left.
Yeah.
Or they passed off, and like Joe said, there's, there's not a lot of real long time natives here. Um, but there's also, it it's interesting to change the. People that have come up and retired people who live here now. When they come up from another state. And then they go, wow, we we didn't think we were ever going to see this. You know, we thought it was going to stay a small town Lincoln forever. But it's, it's not. It's not that, you know, that development's bad, it's just, you know. I think you have to maintain. Some of that. Thing that brought people here.
Yeah.
No time identity.
You know, yeah, I mean, and and so for me. Master plan should try and retain some of the, the older. More natural parts of Lincoln. But yet not close out. The, the development course, how how it works, how integrates with it, you know, this for me. I don't know what kind of wording that would be. But I think there's a lot of people that are concerned about what Lincoln's turning into.
Yeah.
And I think the name should. Show them that we're going to look at that.
Thank you.
I I like the last one. Livable Lincoln twenty forty, a vision for the future.
Excellent, thank you, Vajin.
Me too, sure, sweet to the point.
I like the livable Lincoln, I like the twenty forty, just because they give you like, I like that you have the twenty sixteen, you can kind of baseline and say, oh, yeah, with that. But I wonder about vision for the future. If you reverse it, doing, uh, sustaining what we value. And then. Uh, a vision for the future.
Yep.
Because you're combining those two. And embracing what's next. I don't know. How short you want it, but it seems like shorter is better, so that might be a little too long.
Yeah, and we can, uh, figure out how best to utilize the byline too, and if it feels like a little long for the logo, but we want to, um. Create like a separate version that is a little bigger and then for other types of materials we can, that we've done that before, we'll, we'll, we'll create. You know, a very simplified version to have small on certain materials and then have one that's a little bit bigger.
I thought we took off embracing what's next, but. Blue Lincoln twenty forty. Um. Sustaining what we value, and then just take off to embrace what's next and put a vision for the future.
Yes, exactly, yes, that's, I agree with that.
That way their combined is kind of bulked.
Yeah.
So it keeps our, our value.
Yeah.
You want, and also as a vision for the future.
Yep, I think that's great.
With the first word being livable or whole.
Livable is what I thought.
Well, like in twenty forty.
Yeah.
And right, sustaining what we value, and then a vision for the future after that, so.
Yep. I think that's great. Um, so is everyone good with that?
I am, I know, kiss him. All right, so you pick this up, what's your name?
Art Rita.
Art Rita. Um. Part of the, part of the naming piece, we don't want to lose like the where mountains, people and opportunity meet, that resonated with you. One of the things we're going to have to do at some point, not too far from now, is actually writing a vision.
Exactly.
So some of the things that we're hearing from you guys now that resonate, tradition, the mountain, where mountains are people, and tradition me, like all that. That will get, we'll start teasing it out more and more. So if we end up on a name that you all agree you can live with. Um, just know that we have more places we're going to get to explain who Lincoln is, the value of tradition, the value of recreation. Um, I just don't want to go that long.
No, no, um. My one thing about a vision for the future is that I feel like it's kind of a cliche statement, and it's been very overused. But if we do a vision for what's next, that's a whole different spin, and it gets rid of the. Future, so then it gets rid of the cliche part of just that sense. And it seems like mountains, river, our river is important, and then obviously people, so instead of opportunity. Including mountains and river. Everybody loves the river here.
So let me make sure the back. I I want to go back because it felt like I think we're coming to, um, yeah.
To derail.
Okay, um, so livable link in twenty forty, sustaining what we value, a vision for what's next.
A vision for the future.
A vision for the future, I'm I'm found out of everyone else who's found that.
Yeah, I think we were.
Um, and then we'll make sure some of the other concepts that were just discussed are worked into the vision statement, and we'll have that. Um, okay, that sounds great. Um. In the hand.
No imagery.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Um, so. We want to create a logo to bring to you for the next meeting. Um, are there any iconic imagery elements? That you think of when you think of Lincoln that you should consider incorporating into the logo?
Big hotels. Okay, and lots of on, right?
Well, yeah, it's going to be really popular, yeah.
You go.
We just want to make sure that we, um, consider imagery that feels like it resonates. Um, and.
Examples?
Examples could be as simple as mountains. Um, we've done river, we've done clock towers, we've done, um, town hall structures. Um, if, again, if they're like notable for the community. Um, what is another example?
I think Dover with Garrison Tower.
Right, a water tower, water tower was a particular like landscape element for them. Um. Yeah, so it's, it's oftentimes, sometimes a natural feature, sometimes it's a built feature that everyone recognizes. Um, sometimes it's, you know, a winding road that's kind of supposed to like be the path. Path towards the future, right? So it can be a little bit more conceptual too. Um, you also might not have any, if you wanted to see what we come up with, that's fine too, but we just wanted to. In case there are some strong opinions for like what you think should be incorporated, we wanted to hear.
Yeah, I have ones came up with, um, it does seem maybe a mountain range in the background. And one of our, I think, one of our best. Is, is the full.
Hmm.
The full gorge, because it's again a natural. Um, natural thing.
Yeah. Great.
The, uh, one of the older things there. In the, in the town, as far as community, is the cank record just here.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that's something that's been around for a long, long time.
Cool.
So, I mean, that, that kind of shows skiing, you know, recreation.
Yeah.
That, that, and it shows. The longevity of it, you know, that the importance of people put on it, because they keep it there. Yeah.
Yeah. And what we might do is, um, if there's like two or three that rise up in the conversation, we might bring a couple of options to you, so you can kind of decide. I like the cank one and how that's turning out, or like the, the mountains and the bloom or.
But I think, you know, if, if we're trying to make this look like. What we've got for a project, I mean. Yeah, sustaining what we value is. Like you said, scenery of what's around.
Yeah.
But a vision for the future, you know, you laugh, but I mean, it it could be, I mean, you know, I mean. It, it, it could be. South Peak, because that is, that's the biggest vision that I wouldn't want to put a hotel on there.
Yeah.
But I mean, South Peak or Little Mountain is one of the developments that are. You know, we're, we're more transient homes now, also. And that vision for the future is how you deal with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's. That's what we're all here doing is, you know.
Yeah.
Every meeting we go to is all about. You know, development, development and more development.
Totally, yeah.
How we deal with that, that's.
A, a thought in the logo, since boy kind of threw that in. Maybe we could have something that is sustainable that was here, and then maybe another part of that mountain part of where we're going to.
Yeah.
Sorry, but.
Yeah, what, what? It, it included something with mountains and the rivers in the background. And then on one side had depictions of like the old mill and the old railroad.
Hmm.
And then on the other side, in the other side, um. Images of, and again, I don't want to say just condos or just hotels, but some of the more. Moderns development that are going on, kind of bringing the.
Okay, the river front.
It, yeah, it could be. Yeah, something that resembles any of the condos, hotels in town.
Riverwalk would be nice.
The Riverwalk is a beautiful building.
Not sure there is. Does it have to be a building, could it be recreation? It's shown on the other side.
I think that, I think that. If, if we're looking at a vision for the future, it's how we'll get. For me, living here. My question is, how are we going to deal with all this?
Yeah.
And.
Because it's happening.
All this is the hotels, the condos, the, the riverwalk, how does Lincoln deal with all that?
Yeah.
Big question mark. Well, what's serious, did it? That's, that's basically the question from, from local citizenry that have been lived here for a long time, you know, to. People who were just been here for a little while to, you know, so it's, it's how you're dealing with all that change, that's what this. Old master plan should be.
Totally.
Totally about, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
How we plan to deal with it financially and everything.
Just like, I'll get pictures of the first bear show in Lincoln nineteen sixteen, that was at the Indian home. You could take somebody's, I'll get. Back with my mother feeding the bears in nineteen sixteen.
Wow.
And compare that, and bears actually went to Clark's after going, going to depression. Might do something like transition, different period.
Yeah. Wow, cool, that's neat.
If you wanted, you probably find and dig out some pictures, I still have in the bear show. I mean, the original bear, it was a bear and a chain and a collar.
Wow.
A little W feeding an ice cream.
It'd be awesome, awesome with that, I wish you could plan, you know, it'd be really great.
I think if we're going to do like a timeline thing, you shouldn't forget about like the indigenous people who were here kind of before the settlers even broke out.
So could you make maybe like it's a microscope?
Some of us, you can definitely do it in the.
Like, aren't they running summer?
I'm pretty sure we got the young little guy. We got a big circle. There we keep something in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, bike shape maybe.
Well, I think we have what we need to be able to bring you some options for the next meeting. Um, and. We'll incorporate the timeline, kind of piece some of these other details within the plan itself, I think that's going to make it really strong. And some of the historic imagery, like that's going to make, that's going to be very cool.
Also get pictures of the railroad going back to the Montgomery Motel in nineteen four.
Wow, cool. Oh, that's neat. Yeah.
I grew up in France, but then.
Just so you know, Joe was the guy who actually made dirt. Okay, so what someone said, I was given some dirt, Joe made the dirt.
Oh, my gosh, okay, good.
That's a remember your grandfather. All right.
Okay, many heads over to Crystal, man.
You do well.
All right. Um, so we have developed this draft outreach and engagement plan that we wanted to share with you guys today. So we drafted this to help correct efforts over the course of this project, and as you can see, it's basically an Excel spreadsheet. We try and keep it in this format so that there's outreach plan can be updated throughout this process. We try and keep it in this format so that this outreach plan can be updated throughout this process. Um, you'll also notice that it's divided into three parts, so, um, pointing out what is, uh, what are some outreach? Techniques, um, to help get the word out, who might help, um, facilitate that or get that done, and then a simple timeline. And we typically like to develop this early on in the project, just so that we can start, um. You know, getting an idea of what has worked in the past for you guys, um, and also, um. What specific demographics we should target, which I know had come up at last meeting, though I wasn't there. Um, and also starting to use the, you know, some of the town's existing avenues for getting the word out. Or, um, tabling and some events like, uh, we can piggyback off of. So from last month's meeting, um, like I mentioned, it was mentioned that businesses, seasonal residents, seniors, and young people and families. Were identified as a target demographic, and one thing we wanted to point out in this outreach, um, plan. Is suggesting focus groups to, um, maybe capture the demographic. And basically, we just wanted to share this draft with you guys today. To just, um, share these initial outreach techniques with you all, and see if there are any other outreach methods that are missing, if there are some specific groups. To reach out to or to include, and, um, again, any upcoming events we could maybe, if you guys were interested at tabling that, we can piggyback off.
So your demographics, that you were, you just talked about, that you were gonna be looking to give feedback on, is that on this?
Yeah, so for the, the last one, focus groups. We just listed businesses, second time homeowners, for seasonal residents, uh, seniors, young people and families as potential groups.
So. The businesses in Lincoln have a, that's all the business, chamber of commerce. Which might be a valid way to tie the business interest, and so I'm not sure they would, they could get into a chamber of commerce meeting.
They've what, we've what?
They have the annual meeting.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you know whether it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you get the chamber for that.
Twenty at the box hall.
There you go.
Eleven thirty to one thirty to, to lunchtime.
That's awesome, but we're, we're very booked that cover, so it's, it's great when there's a daytime meeting. Or actually.
Well, something like that, it could just be more of an announcement, like letting them know and getting them to sign up if they wanna be involved.
Well, I'm done, that's what I was gonna say, we have some, because people are gonna like it. They're going for it, and they're gonna be there, give you some time, that they could probably get the time to be able to discuss.
She's on the board, not me.
I'm not on the board anymore, I'm sure you can get some time.
Yeah, you can get some time.
We can give you a connect, so you can call him, and then she's the director in the chamber, and so she can give you that.
Is there a way, yeah, you can contact them, but if, if you brought up some format prior to that, about what you're gonna, what you're gonna talk about. Maybe what you're looking for from new businesses, that way, at least they can think about prior to becoming to talk to them.
That's great.
And it's pretty soon, so at this point, it would just be telling them, we won't even have the logo and the name of those, alright. But it'd be telling them that we're just starting the process, we can tell them about the timeline and the scope of work that the town has started on this, and that their feedback from them is gonna be requested with the. And kind of get from that heads up and collect content.
And, and you could be the. You could give them your contact information, so that they would, you know, like, if you can see that.
Yeah.
Um, there's also another one, it is. Western White Mountains, same thing, same thing.
Okay, so that's the Chamber of Commerce name.
Western White Mountains Chamber of Commerce.
Ah, okay, great, great.
And then you have. Second, we'd seen this as a senior center that Lincoln has over on, really, Jeanette.
Um, some of these that you guys are listening, and we actually put that under direct communications too, under the. Sixth one.
I think that's fine, cause even if these end up kind of elevating, like as like higher priority, but just like, let's focus on those.
Oh, yeah, definitely, I just wanna make sure if there's any more that we can add to this.
So your outreach will have been that you will, you'll go to those places and talk to them, or will they come into the work, just while you talk to them? Does it make, I, I don't know how you make that work, I, I make that connect.
We won't go talk to anybody until we've told you, but, but until we show you what we have to share and we've told you about it. My guess would be, we would wanna set these up where we would go to them. Um, because we know that you had talked about getting people to come to meetings this hard, and we wanna have this, you know, we talked about using multiple strategies. So if somebody would rather participate by being on the phone and giving us feedback, they can do that. But knowing that some of these populations might not use technology, or may not fully engage that way, even if they wanna be on a computer or do something, you wanna make sure it's happening. Um, so it'd probably be going to, and it probably wouldn't be until after we're done with the existing conditions, the fall. And so we have some facts and analysis, we start to wrap our heads around, what are the questions that you agree we should be asking people? You wanna have some to show, and something to ask.
Um, and, yeah. What's up, man? The community building also does, they still do.
There's, there's two, two access points for seniors, one is at the community center on Paul Road, and they do, um, senior lunch there. And then they do senior activities, whether it's, um, chair volleyball, or.
Bingo.
Chair bingo on Fridays, um.
Go to that.
I used to do cherry over, yeah.
Yeah. That, which is new, like.
Yeah.
Last night they announced it, but anyway, that's one access, the other is, is the senior living center, which is on, um. Well, it's visible from Connect Road.
It's spur.
People enter the spur.
Are the seniors that are at the senior living center house, are they mostly from Lincoln, are they Lincoln residents, or are there seniors that are?
At this point, they're Lincoln residents, because they live in Lincoln. The, in the senior center, it's Lincoln Woodstock, so you're gonna get a mix of Lincoln and Woodstock. A lot of things in this town, all Lincoln and Woodstock, go to the rec department, school, I mean.
Yeah, close partnership there.
I know there's a lot of crossover here, but like, it doesn't say like, um, the school. So I know like, the kids would be reachable through probably like, you know, social media, Instagram, TikTok, all those, but like, I don't know about like, maybe the teachers? Maybe like having like a group collective, teachers sit down or something.
I think it would be great to get the students, I.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the students to see what, their vision and future, so it'd be nice to get there, between them and, and seniors are, have looked at, like, they've seen this before.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot of opportunity for people getting out of school at Lenwood to come here and come, make enough money where they can. Buy a house, or like stay here, so that's, you know, you might find that there's a lot of that type of thing.
The kids and their at the schools, you have K through twelve in town, but you have some other towns attending the school, right? So, that's, that's great, so, and even the Woodstock kids have a strong understanding of Lincoln, their pride relying on services in Lincoln, so like, they would still have thoughts of engaging them. And trying to split the two would be easier.
They still don't like.
Pride, um, so, yeah, we can, we can brainstorm that too, because there are some activities we could do, often the teachers will engage classrooms, and even if every teacher doesn't want to. So it could be both, it could be getting a group of teachers together, because there are also some of them are residents, or some are residents. And then having them engage the kids and kind of help us think about the best way, uh, that would be really fun to do that.
Need more, who's the one to give the grid?
It, the other one that is, the, uh. Let's think about, and I don't think we can leave out, it's Little Mountain.
Yeah.
Little Mountain is growing, growing, gone, I mean, and, and, and they're riding along what's being developed today. So, I mean, I, I think maybe talking to them about their future, their future plans, to see what they have. Um, along with all, all the businesses at the chamber, you would get, probably get a pretty good idea of what's coming down the pipe for the town, like.
So I don't need to get like that over the, from my skis too much, um, but I did reach out to Jay Samio. Um, and just had a conversation with him to let him know that we're working on the master plan, so as a area resident, someone working at the mountain. So letting him know that this is happening, and also just to ask, one of the questions we had for you tonight was, are you interested in hearing from visitors? Like, do you wanna have a specific visitor kind of question there about their experiences of coming here, so you can just understand how they view the community? Doesn't mean you have to weigh what you do in the plan towards what they want, but sometimes what they're seeing, what they're wanting, can be telling. Um, he said, if you decided that you wanna do any kind of outreach to like, just broad people who come here, that they would be happy to help, like, let us put stuff up. Just basically a QR code that says like, you know, what do you think, like, like, explain first feature, um, get us feedback. Um, it could be interesting, we did, when we're in working with Bar Harbor, we did a little bit of hearing from visitors, it was kind of off cycle season wise for them, so it wasn't as beneficial. Some communities like it, some communities don't wanna know what the people said, so we just wanted to give you the chance to think about it, and you will have the science now.
Well, they're already here, so that tells us something.
Right, right.
I, I, I don't object to that.
Yeah.
But I would give that minimal.
Sure.
Way, way, yeah, but I think the other target group that is really key, and I think it would be helpful to, to, uh. Get in touch with, is some of the people who either live here or live nearby here. Who are more transient, like that are coming in to, to Lincoln to work for the summer, or work for the winter, um. Again, they might not be here for this in twenty forty. But people like them need to be here in twenty forty, so to hear from them, I think would, would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't really, that I agree, but cutting off a section of people, I think we're here to listen to everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this process is, they just listen, listen to the melting pot come in, and they, or they say things you agree with, they disagree with. And then at the end, pick those out, say, these are the ones that felt are more prevalent and, and relevant to, to Lincoln and where we're going. Yeah, you know, and, but you gotta allow everybody to say what's on their mind, good, bad, or indifferent. I mean.
Yeah.
I think what's nice about that approach is, you know, unfortunately, the master plan, when it's done, it doesn't have every answer you're gonna need for the rest fifteen years, right? It sets a direction, and it identifies things. Exactly, it identified work to be done, and if some of it is, wow, you know, we've heard about transportation challenges from locals and visitors. And we identified a few strategies, there's still work to be done, and you really still wanna engage some of those players.
One of the things that I think we need to look at is what all this growth is gonna do to. What Lincoln's gonna have to do to be able to keep up with all this growth.
Yes.
I mean, you know, right, right now, for example, we're, we're in a water moor going, can't outside fire, can't, I mean, you know, you. There's, there's things that, traffic, I mean, things like that, I mean, to look at all those things, to talk to the public works guy and says, now we need new schools to break them plant. I mean, the school is another one that's, that they're losing attendance in it, right, and over at school, I mean, this, we built. We used to only have, have one high school.
Yeah.
And then they built the, we built the other school, and now the attendance is going to drop, so things like that, but, I mean, to me. I mean, and the secret kind of is, and, and the other thing is, so we live so close to Woodstock. And we don't, but we don't really share a whole lot, we, we say it's Lincoln Woodstock, but Lincoln, they have the burden financially of most of the things we provide. You know, because we're a property-rich community.
Right.
You know, tax-wise, so, I mean, those things have big bearing on. Where we're going, what we're doing.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, we have a lot of things that we need, I think, that are coming down the pipe.
Yeah.
Also beginning with the school. The house that Clark's printing beds, the original school over in Lincoln, dating back to Johnville, which is at the Beacon, it's down back in the twenty, in, in early thirties. And you might see that school, there's one that maples, a school tree, maple tree, and one we have now, if you want to.
Quite different.
Original school burned down, which was the end of Maple Tree, the pack line ended up here.
Yeah. Subway?
Yeah.
Subway is Subway restaurant?
No. We do, in the Bay, between the other end, Penguin, Penguin. I'll put a picture of the town record, it'd be in there, that burned down, that's why they built the one that coolest place across here, to place that one. And they built the other two schools.
So I'm not, I'm not much, but the, the history, that's wrong. I mean, that's not right.
We showed what we're getting into.
We, we need to take a look at what we wanna preserve, and how are we gonna handle going forward, and what that influence is gonna be.
Yeah.
We're here. Go ahead.
Another demographic, I think that's not really on here, and honestly, it's cause they almost don't exist in this town for twenty-somethings. A lot of our kids go to college, and then, like you were hitting on, it's hard to sustain as adults in this town when you just started off.
Yeah.
So it's like, how to reach demographic that isn't really here, once upon a time, I came to this town in my twenties, there was a ton of twenty-year-olds, but there's not really that demographic anymore. So, like, how you connect to a population that's not really here and flourishing, and be like, why don't you live in Lincoln, or what would bring you here to this town to thrive or whatever?
I mean, there's obviously a lot of people wanna come to.
Yeah.
There's one thing we could do.
There's a lot, you know, but it's almost like the, the box is only this big.
Yeah.
And, you know, a, all the flat slopes that we have built all the old time housing on, stuff like that, they're all taken.
Yeah.
Now we're building on steep slopes where, you know.
Totally.
Houses that are worth millions, you know, and it's, it, it's hard to fathom how, how that goes forwards, that some, some of the child grows up.
Yeah.
And Lincoln goes to lower high school, graduates, goes to college, wants to come back, and you don't hear a whole lot of success stories like that.
Yeah.
You know, they go somewhere else, because it's.
And I can tell you, my, my twenty-year-old wouldn't have there before, but, um, he went to leave Lincoln only because he's so proud. But he likes to come back to visit.
That does long, takes terrible.
But it's, it's interesting just to see that, um, even the twenty, forty-year-old things is crowded and busy, and. Uh, but I just wanted to say, I like the idea of involving them, only because of their outreach and their connection with the visitors, and it might be, it might be. I think it allows you to kind of tap into the second home buyer up here, and the younger crowd, the twenty-year-olds that are working there. Again, my son's a mechanic down in Nashville, but he works a ski team on the weekends, it appears. And they have a great time on the weekends up there, but again, they're not living in the community, but they could probably give some information, but. Such an outreach that, and I don't, the other thing I don't know about from a standpoint of other social media sites, like on Facebook. I don't know how that could be actually tapped into, but if some of you follow like Exit Thirty Two, or some of the other.
There's a Lincoln Woodstock page.
Yeah, and there's like thirty-two, it was a lot of people that spent a lot of time up here that have a lot to say about what's going on, that aren't necessarily in, involved, but maybe. I don't know if there's a way we would actually be able to post on that about, hey, this is happening, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it's, it's a mountain ball, but at some point in time, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to cut it somewhere and say, you know, the. Look, we're, we're, we can only look so far into where we're gonna be here, we gotta live within our means somewhere, yeah.
You know, there's ten years, leave me, if you maxed out or any paper wrote at all.
That's it.
They're talking about, it must be at least a hundred units motels up on Route Three to shutter, now they're not used, so could be done with that. But.
Well, and the town Lincoln does have, and we, I think we talked to Steve about this when, first thing, town like owns three or four hundred acres up in, on Mansion Hill. On, uh.
Route Three.
Route Three, yeah. It was an old campus world.
Three hundred and twenty-one acres.
Three hundred and twenty-one acres, thank you, Joe. But that's another big part of where Lincoln's gonna try and help resolve some of these issues, I, I don't know where, how that stands, where it's at, but OJ would know, he's, he's like.
When you talk about growth, I don't think it's necessarily us, um, the town reported eighteen deaths on Berkeley.
Wow.
Right, you know, so that tells you a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it tells you that that this, you know, people who live in here.
One thing I tried, I've been trying to get, tried to need it. For TV did something like community policy put in the town. That would get people in there to take it, the kids go to school.
They did that, Frank Tony, and then cost too much money because of tax.
Tax rate, you think Tony Paul?
I went up there.
All right, in the interest of the time. If you, so like, that was a lot of good feedback that also started to touch on things you need to know for existing conditions. Uh, I think that Crystal pointed out that that document is just a self friendly. And it's so we can keep updating it and tracking it, we can, every time we come in, we'll say like, okay, I mean, I know that your town manager is listening. So like, we're gonna wanna work on setting up a webpage for this, so we have a landing page, so when you have the branding done, we can explain. What a master plan is and what you're doing in the timeline. So as we start making progress in the near term on these things, well. Crystal and I will be the one to be saying, we'll be updating you. But if, as you learn of other ideas, or if you have specific thoughts on how to engage, you know, the Rotary and the Chamber further beyond October. Or how to engage kids, like, don't stop being creative, but continue to give us ideas if the best that we can, there will be a stopping point of what we can do. But um, posting stuff to social media, we can create all the materials for you, posters, things like that, as we are ready to roll those things out and say. We want to engage with you, we'll create all that for you, and we'll run it by this group for you.
And so, so I see on here, um. That way surveys.
Yeah.
When would you envision doing something with that? Because that that was part of the last one we did in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, so I would say after the holidays. So the way you were set this.
February is kind of like.
Yeah.
Because we'll probably take January to run questions by you all, just to, so you get to see it before it launches.
Right.
With a tentative kind of launch in February and having it open for until the end of March, or however long it feels like, makes sense.
So if you remember in our proposal, we kind of broke it into three phases, you know, phase one that we're in now is. Us learning about everything, pulling data together, which Crystal and Zach have already started on. We want to report that out to you by December and have a draft that we can put up on the website, where people can understand. The land use constraints, the population change, housing challenges, all that.
Let's look and facing.
Exactly. We're gonna use that to then derive the questions that Liz mentioned. But there's no sense trying to do that and engage people, because we don't know enough yet to ask the right questions. Um, and there's no sense trying to engage people over the holidays. We found like by the beginning of the year. We're ready to kind of roll out that public engagement, do the focus groups, meet with the kids, meet with the seniors. Learn as much as we can, come back and tell you what we learned, show you what we learned. It also lets us know if we're not hitting, like if the survey is just not hitting, people aren't doing it, like what do we need to do different? Do we need to table at some events? Do we need to find other businesses? And then when we have it. Crystal actually pulls all that feedback together, creates an outreach and engagement report. That will tell you who we talked to, all the ways you reached out. This is part of how you select board and planning board can tell people what you're doing. All the people you reached out to, how you reached out to them, and what they said. And it'll include an analysis of that, and it'll include all the running too.
The, I I mean, I think you're gonna have your work cut out for you.
Sure.
If if we follow the two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
Master plan, because I believe there wasn't very much participation in that. Right? I mean, it was.
The survey was pretty good.
They got a fair number of responses to those surveys, but they worked hard to get them.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I mean, so. I I don't know what methods you use.
Yeah.
You guys are the professionals, you know, they're trying to get people interested. I don't know how you do that, because there's some people say. What could this guy be? The last one wasn't in difference, this pointed it into the town, we're still.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we're still attracted, we still get this, we still get that, no kids in school, whatever they say.
Yeah.
You know, so there's, there's gotta be a way to attract them to be able to learn participating.
Yeah. Yeah, and the other thing is to be realistic of expectations. So you're in town meeting town. How many people do you have for town meeting? So we want to get more than that engaged, definitely. But sometimes we find a few hundred people, if we're getting an assortment of people, and we're hearing. Consistent trends that resonate with your observations with the data. It may only take a few hundred people to get there. We can get more than that, and if we're getting visitors and second homeowners, you know, we may be able to get quite a bit more. Especially now in twenty sixteen, what Karen Fitzgerald didn't have to her advantage, people weren't doing online surveys quite as much. People are used to polling and online surveys on their phone now, so that we're seeing that part maybe more responsive than uh, maybe like.
I mean, to me, one of the things that would be important is to know where the demographics are coming from.
Yeah.
And number four, so you know, when you finally get it, so if, for example, most of these second homeowners are saying this.
Yeah.
Of most of, you know, uh, the only surviving locals that are here are saying this, and it, or, you know, the seniors.
Yeah.
You know, so it would be nice to kind of see where it's coming from.
We will do that. We always have a subset of what, like six demographic questions? Um, and that's so we can compare and contrast with that. And even if it's to say like, wow, two groups of people that have strong opinions.
Right, definitely.
But you know, that has to be addressed, there's some education, there's some engagement, we need to do that.
There is another source of data that you knew. About fifteen to eighteen years ago, we had a downtown committee made. To be a, be a contemplative, this thick, in town, which is one of the key in town. But you some of that for demographics, you would print firemen to change, town has records of it, yeah.
Okay.
That was, that was your downtown committee.
Thank you.
Yeah, it reached that for a year and a half, three years, they loved it, whatever they wanted, but nothing to implement without it.
That might actually, I want to, I think we should switch around what we're gonna do as far as order. Um, that might be a good segue to talking about existing conditions research. We have just a couple of things we wanted to ask. Crystal wanted to ask, and we have a handout, we're gonna pass it out. Um, but to the other point about, um, you know, information that you're aware of, I know there aren't a lot of studies and plans.
Oh, we got them all right here.
I'll take all the pictures, Joe, I will be very happy to have.
But I was in it.
And he's still here.
Uh, yeah, so as um, you've mentioned, Zach and I have started uh, with the existing conditions research. For across all topics. Uh, we're really getting into the, starting to get into it, but um. I was able to pull a lot of documents, we're looking for recent documents. Um, within the last, you know, five to eight years would be great. Um, so I did go on the town website and Zach and I were able to pull some of the recent documents, but I did notice a few things missing. Um, like the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four town annual reports. Um, and the implementation plan for the master plan from twenty sixteen showed as. An appendix, but I I don't have access to the appendix, so it's just these little minor things that I think would plus um. Support our research.
So the twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four town reports. I believe the library, the Lincoln Library might be another place to get some of that research. Uh, today, I think they keep copies over there of that.
Okay.
Those are the ones with electronic?
Electronic.
Yeah. Definitely either a query. Yeah, but we'll settle with whatever we can get. Okay. Yeah, well.
The, those reports are definitely on the town website, they just might not be on the same page as all the other ones. Um, but we can get them electronically, but they're definitely on the website, because I just found them. I can send the links.
What else were you missing?
Um, the implementation plan from the two thousand sixteen master plan on the website. It shows it as um, an appendix, but there's no appendix to it.
Just not attached to the PDF.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Is the implementation plan? Like this?
Yeah.
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 Great.
Okay.
Um. It looks like that was uh, 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 made in an Excel file.
Yeah.
Um, I assume we have it electronically, if not, we have.
Um, and we've heard from you guys that there aren't too many studies done, um. But we wanted to ask if you have any um, traffic or parking studies done. If any recent, um, we know you have a hazard mitigation plan, but are there any other? Like natural hazard, natural resource type of um, climate resilience type of documents? If not, that's okay, we're also, what was that?
Not here, not gonna tell, probably doing a traffic study right now, and you're being, you're demoing earlier, and then you're putting one coming up.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that that just did one, they're in the process of doing one up here, over the common man is.
Yeah.
Up in that, that corner.
Great.
Um, the state DOT might be a good place to look to, I don't know if they've done any recent.
I did look at their ten year plan, and I didn't see um, Lincoln listed. But they'll definitely have.
Um, I'm the, I'm gonna ask Crystal a question, I'm really asking you guys a question. Um, I saw the hazard mitigation was on here, and I saw, I think it's twenty twenty one, that was on the website. But there was a mention of starting a new hazard mitigation plan last year, you know, one got underway, or is there one underway now?
One was uh, completed last year, so we have the new one, it's probably might not be on the website yet, but we, we, we finished one in twenty four.
Great, thank you. And if we could get that at some point, that'd be great.
Yep, no problem.
Um, and I could start like a drop offs um, folder, if you want to put documents in there, or you can just, if you have them electronically. Probably be easier if you just send them to us personally via email, and I can have them in there. Uh, but yeah, if you have any documents, we are gonna be looking at um, North Country Council's most recent. Um, regional plans, um, as well as the states. But if you have any uh, interesting documents that you want future, please kind of send it our way.
I mean, if you're looking for a document, then one of the documents. That Loon had, when they did their South Peak expansion, was the EIS, FIS.
Okay.
So this does some of that, and Forest Service may even have some updated information on that.
That's great.
North Country Council also did a workforce housing study on Lincoln. Um, I don't know if you have access to that through them, but we have a copy of that too, that we could definitely send your way.
That would be great.
Are you familiar with Loon Mountain's Flight Path twenty thirty plan?
You should be, but we're not.
Okay. That's, uh, it it's, I believe, uh, website is Flight Path twenty thirty.
Okay.
But you'll find it on the Loon Mountain website.
Actually, Loon Mountain has a mask, they don't give it up, but they do have a mask plan with regards to. The Forest Service and what they're planning on doing, so, and the Forest Service has a call. I'd like to obtain that, but it's not easy.
Is it different than the Flight Path plan?
Uh.
More comprehensive?
There is more, I think it's more comprehensive. I think it deals with. Um, what they, what they're proposing to permit schemes, but also there's things now that it was a downhill slide. And I'm not sure it's like that twenty thirty, but um, there's different parts that. Yeah. There's a, there's a, there's a permit somewhere in there, but there's, there's other things that they look at, you know, I mean, that Forest Service looks at as far as. What Loon Mountain's planning for the future, and that, that might be.
If you haven't been able to get a copy of it?
No, but might be able to talk to Jay.
I'll talk to Jay, and I'll talk to the Forest Service.
Forest Service will, will give you a very redacted copy, but they.
Okay.
Little, little mountain has a, has a, obviously, it's just.
Well, thanks for the tip.
Vitory, I think, so it's, you know, they don't want to let out whatever they're gonna do to everybody, so I think that's why the.
Okay.
Um, one other thing I wanted to mention is as part of the um, community facilities and services. Section of the existing conditions that we're gonna do part of the research is we, I think it's really helpful to just. Give a quick phone call to the department heads and just ask them, um, what are their needs within the next, you know, five to ten years? And what's going on in their department? And it's just a quick, you know, usually ten to fifteen minute chat. Um, and I wanted to bring it up because we like to give a little bit of a heads up if a staff person would be able to. Let the department heads know that we'll be reaching out to them.
I I I think you could run that through Karina.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
She, she'd be the one that would probably organize it for you and get the lots of. I mean, definitely the Department of Public Works, dealing with the water and sewer and how all that works.
If we can, Karina, we can draft that email, like Crystal could draft it, we could send it to you to look at, and then feel free to just copy and paste what you want. And then it'll give them a heads up and a chance if they prefer to do it by email, but um, also the offer to jump on a call.
Yeah, I mean, our department heads are relatively easy to work with, so I'm sure it won't be an issue.
Now I think it does.
Now I think I'm dust.
Um, the other thing we wanted to talk about before next steps was um, the twenty sixteen master plan. So I'm gonna just, yeah, I looked at it to remember what was covered, um. But it would be good, maybe for the next meeting, if you all could look back at it, to just flag that, like, wow, this is still a goal. You know, retaining your heritage, retaining elements of what made you Lincoln. Um, or this is an action that's still out there that hasn't been acted on, that we want to make sure gets carried forward, anything. And it'd just be good to kind of hear from you about that, so we make sure that we're taking the most salient points from twenty sixteen, we're not losing them. And we're carrying it forward. It's part of how you're kind of coding us and educating us to be ready.
Yeah.
Um, and so the goals and strategies that you see in there, um. I don't know if it's possible for Karina to be able to coordinate with you and maybe with Carol before she's gone, but. To get a sense for like what was accomplished in twenty sixteen, in twenty fifteen, like, did a lot of the things happen? So um, that would be helpful just to know, so that we can take anything that you really think is so important and help the framework carry forward.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, okay, is that sort of a good plan for the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Because the next meeting will touch on outreach a lot less, we'll, we'll look at the logo, some logos.
Yeah.
But uh, we'll touch on it less. Crystal will just come in with questions that she and Zach have come up with, things that they're stumped by, or it's about. But more than anything, we can kind of talk about twenty sixteen. Um, so if that, that would be totally great. All right.
What do you plan on, what do you think your next meeting?
So we'd like to come back on the twenty second of October. Which is your second monthly meeting, right?
Yeah, we've got a pretty cool one the first of October, so.
Okay. And then I think we're gonna be in good shape to finish writing the existing conditions reports. My suggestion in our, in our. Agenda that we sent along was to skip November. And then depending on when you're the second December meeting, and, or is, um, I don't know if you're gonna need an efficiency, oh yeah. All right, I'm gonna bring my family. I want to dress like Sam Club. Um, so this is the twenty second word call.
I think so for right now.
Okay, let's see if it gets too busy.
Yeah, so. How much time are you looking for on the twenty second, so you can?
If we can have, like, we just gave it an hour, so we can have forty five minutes to an hour, would be great.
Say like an hour.
Yeah, and then.
Prior to the twenty second, what are you looking for from this or or from the town, so we can just kind of, probably ought to. Have some sort of a.
Punch list.
Punch list or a list of what you, you may be looking for, so that we, we're, and I know the board saying we want to look at twenty sixteen. See what we did, but what, what else are you looking for from the staff, Karina, as a, and the head top?
What we'll do is.
Instead of writing or an email, so.
Yeah, we'll follow up with an email. Do you want to be CC'd on communication? Okay, so we'll follow up with an email to staff, we'll CC you, and we'll have between our combined notes, just the things we're looking for, the documents and other stuff. Um, and that'll be easy. And then we'll revise the outreach and engagement plan and probably bring a new version next month with, with the branding. Um, and we'll start making that way and getting a webpage up and all that, so we start to have skeleton of like, that we're just starting to build. But. And then maybe on October meeting, we could talk about December.
Yeah.
And if it's, December feels too tight, you can bump it to the beginning of January, whatever makes sense, I mean, we'll take as much time as we can to refine the draft. Um. But it'd be nice to do some.
You know, I just had a thought, I was, we're talking about the uh. Project name, the project picture.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe we could run some of this through. Um, the school. um the school, the kids have a participation in some of that. It might often work, whether it's, you know, they draw a picture or maybe they submit something or.
It might not work for the initial branding, but it could work for naming the plan or photos, like drawings and stuff to go in the plan, which we've done some of that.
Yeah, and it can be really compelling.
Yeah, so here's a way.
Yeah, yeah, I just think about bringing in some of the generations that
The feedback.
They could take pictures of stuff that they like, send it to you, I mean, it could be anything.
That's a photo contest, that would be another good thing, too.
You know, just just something to get the kids involved in.
Okay.
When pizza face you might want. If you're looking to really old photos and paintings and kind of linked it Maurice Locke has a bunch of them.
Okay.
Probably like two stacks, but that has.
And and we do have a historical society.
You know that.
That's right by the library. Moving on with the, they're ahead of that? Historical society.
It's, as I say, it's not a town.
It's not a town.
Not a town thing, it's a separate.
I just didn't know.
I mean.
Carol Riley, yeah, we'll figure it out.
Right?
It's Carol Riley.
It is, okay, Carol Riley is the librarian.
Oh, okay.
So she's also the person to contact the historical society.
Right.
I hope that was enjoyable.
Way to go.
Well, that's good, sorry, working on a plan is additional work on top of all your volunteer work, right, it can be but we'll we'll try to make it fun and informative along the way.
For what is?
Fuck, what's that there?
Andrew Barrettson, this is, this is great. He came for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, you're nice meeting you all.
Okay. We're done with that, we'll move back on to the uh the minutes. October ten. I have a lot of change on the list.
Tom, um, Joe's not on the list of present of board members.
I'll try that again.
Joe's not on the list of present board members.
That was one of those like um on line twenty nine. Um, we seeded Margarita and Susan and Joel Wright. Margarita was set up. And what else have we got before I start rambling on here?
I had a bunch, you gotta cover themself.
Why don't you go ahead? Maybe I can cross off some of mine while you're going.
Well on my printed version, on page two, lines seventy six through eighty, and then on page three, seventy six through eighty are repeated. So that just needs to be crossed out.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Um line one eighty seven.
Why don't I let me say? Okay.
Should say signs not visible from public ways are not regulated. Because there's a difference between signs that are only vis- um visible only from inside buildings and signs that are not visible from public ways.
You wouldn't have public way now anymore.
Yeah, you probably
Not probably visible from inside the building.
Signs not visible from public ways are not regulated.
It says signs visible only from inside buildings are not regular. Regulation applies, wait, one of you said?
Sorry, yeah.
Sense of regulation applies to those visible from public ways.
Right.
Yes.
I'm saying there are signs that it's signs visible only from inside buildings are not regulated. There are other signs that are not regulated, those are signs that aren't visible from public ways. Like the sign inside the water park that says bathrooms here and a big map that says go, those aren't regulated. No?
Right.
Okay, then the sign that says ice cream, not a directional sign.
Correct.
But it's not regulated. Because it's not visible.
So what do you want to say?
I want line one eighty seven to say signs not visible from public ways are not regulated. Period.
Yeah.
But I think you're all just, regulation applies to those visible from public ways, that should be eliminated. But that's what we said, I know that was, we just did.
Well, it's true, it's just a repeat of what I just said, but we can leave that second half there, regulation applies to those visible from public way.
And then take off the first part. Sign of bill, physical.
Change the first part to say signs not visible, cross out only from, cross out inside buildings and write public ways. That's what I'm suggesting.
Line not.
Signs not visible from public ways.
Public ways. Cross off to our status to public ways. Okay.
All right, and then line two thirty four says non-public session. I think those next three lines should be deleted. So that the next sentence after non-public sentence should say Chair Paul Bowden motion to you know, whatever, line two thirty eight as is. Okay, then what was in line two thirty five is is basically the same as what is in line two forty. The board entered the non-public session at eight fifteen, so we don't need two thirty five.
So you're saying cross off two thirty five?
Two thirty six.
Two thirty seven.
Two thirty seven.
Okay, because of the statute, you're right, two thirty eight, two forty does all that.
That's all of that. Those are the changes about that.
Well, you know, that's
Yeah, yeah.
It is those, what's outline pizza number two twenty three?
Two twenty three.
Outline.
Al line.
Al line.
Name of that one.
Right. I just have them.
You're visiting outline pizza?
Just person sound. I can't miss it.
It's like, it's very silly. For people who can't spell one bit, I don't know.
All right, well.
Al fine.
I have some. Um, I want to make sure on line forty three um that both parking summaries are attached, we didn't get copies of them with our draft, but I'll make sure that they're attached um to the minutes. Uh, on line fifty three. Attendance corrections were noted, one member, and my question is who, and I think that was Joe. On line fifty three. Yeah, I think that was Joe.
Yeah.
Um um from sixty eight through seventy, it says both vehicles as fair address potential violations of stormwater management ordinance at Cedar Circle as four of the six lots may exceed the disturbance threshold that would trigger stormwater regulations. We need to list, and we talked about that that night list of lot numbers. Um, and who are identified that Kaplan um and Holtzman are standalone lots, not part of South Peak violation. Um and we need to also in that incorporate what the percentage of disturbance is for each of the laws.
Did we do that at the meeting?
Yeah, Scott said that he was going to believe now. Paints technically went back and sat and watched this whole thing again. Scott actually said that they were gonna go back through it. And uh he he told us that it was fif- he thought it was fifty fifty six percent, fifty six point five, and there were some that were more, but this is a violation we're talking about, so we need to be direct and we need to be decisive into what it is.
Paul, if I can interject, though, he didn't give those exact percentages at the meeting. He gave it for, I think, one single lot, he didn't give them for the remaining three. So I think to, I think to put it into the minutes when we don't even have those figures currently is not accurate to what happened at the meeting.
What I'm saying is, I want those in the minutes, these are violations, and and Scott said he was gonna get us those those uh percentages.
So that should be in the minutes.
It should be in minutes.
That Scott agreed to get us the percentage of of
Right.
disturbance in each lot.
I asked, I asked him for that, so that we put it in a minute, he said he would get it. Scott also made a comment that I asked him to get it so we could put it in minutes. He said he would, that he would get it for us. He also said that um they would never again permit anything at fifty four point five percent. Um as far as the law was. So that needs to be put in there, I don't know what.
It is in there under compliance standards on the next page, page three.
Compliance standards.
Yep.
Uh, line one, setting line one oh two, going to one oh seven.
Just going back to the other, at the meeting, Scott did.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So it said that Longfellow design build includes stormwater management in most designs unless there's a significant buffer under the fifty five percent, it doesn't say that they're not gonna, they're no longer gonna it get, said he would no longer develop um design anything at fifty four and a half percent disturbance.
Yet without having stormwater management built into it. He's, they're, they're always gonna have, they're always gonna have parcels and lots that go over the fifty five percent. Almost, I would say fifty percent of the South Peak lots go over fifty five percent. They just automatically include stormwater management in the designs, that's what Scott was saying, they're no longer going to submit plans at fifty four percent without stormwater because they know they can't meet that criteria.
Right. Well, they could have to build smaller houses or had bigger lots.
But then that's it says that unless it was the design, unless there is significant buffer under the fifty five percent limit, isn't that what was discussed, whether it was fifty four point nine or fifty four point five, that there would be a significant buffer, they wouldn't go right up to that.
Well, he actually said it. He actually said that we will never again permit at fifty four point five percent.
Without stormwater, without stormwater, they're going.
And beat that, said we can't beat that requirement. So that's what he he said that, and I wanted to begin there, so that when they start coming in at at fifty fifty four point five again, and and they're getting really close to the fifty five, then then they need to make sure that the stormwater is done. This whole thing, the way it was, the way it was written in these minutes, kinda doesn't tell the whole story here, and that's what I'm getting to.
Paul, line one oh six says, going forward, Longfellow design build will include stormwater management in most designs unless there is a significant buffer under the fifty five percent. That is exactly what Scott said he was going to do. He didn't say he was not going to submit plans that were over the fifty five percent. He said they would include stormwater management.
If he submits them over the fifty five percent, he does have to do stormwater management, and that's supposed to come before the board. They don't just automatically get to say, oh, we we permitted this thing at at, we thought it was gonna be fifty three percent, and now it's at sixty percent. Um and 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 we're not gonna tell anybody for a year. I mean, this, this whole thing was ridiculous. It was handled longfully and 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 it was done right.
All right.
All right.
What in the minutes is is, well it it I I don't get it then.
Oh, that's your problem. I get it.
Longfellow design will include stormwater management in most designs unless there is a significant bumper under the fifty five percent limit. I mean, I I don't think we should take that sentence out because that accurately describes what happened in the meeting. Is there something you think we should add to that?
The way he said it was designing right up to the fifty five percent is risky, I will never do that again. And then he went on to say the rest of that.
Right.
But
So let's, let's just, okay, so.
And he he was trying to say he was as frustrated with it as.
That's right.
He he did.
So so why can't we put something in that says on one oh five, Scott Muselli's made the comment that he will never permit anything at fifty four point five percent again because it's risky. As a minor change, but could I'd rather put
He didn't say that he would never permit something at the fifty five percent, Paul. Plans come in all the time over fifty five percent, and they don't have to go to the planning board, they just have to have storm, they just have to follow the stormwater management regulations and the ordinance. He didn't say he's never.
Where do you get the idea that they don't have to come before the planables?
What, what triggers planning board review of a building?
Of of a, right.
We have we have the guy up here that did the um well, cabins up there.
Planning review commercial. Talking residential.
But in residential, I I believe it, I'll look at, look at it, but I believe when you, when you, when they make an application they're supposed to decide whether or not they want stormwater or not. If they do do stormwater, then they then they have to have a stormwater management plan. That stormwater management plan has to be done by qualified engineer, and check with Ray and or the engineer, whoever's gonna look at it. Uh, and 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 that, I don't know how that gets gets done.
That's how it works.
Yeah, so it's supposed to go back and sort it.
It doesn't work with the planning board, it goes to Ray or whoever.
Right.
And gets, gets approved and
That's exactly correct, that's how it works.
We're we're discussing something that isn't, isn't minutes, what is, is, that's not a change to the minutes.
What happens to me?
Up in the corner, God bless. The house.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It is a trouble. I think that, like I said, um I think we wanted to say that because because this, I'm getting a little confused with the back and forth here. Um, I'll leave that one, I'll leave that one alone, under the compliance standards. We we want to make sure to say that the land use permits were issued separately for each lot. Um and Holtzman has not been issued yet. And I really wanna make sure that we get a percentage of disturbance in there for for each lot.
Do we know what that disturbance percentage is?
Oh.
Okay, and we didn't at this meeting, correct?
Scott's supposed to provide it for the minutes.
Okay, can we put in the, the line seventy, a separate sentence that says Scott agreed to provide percentages at this meeting to present at a future time? Because we did not see them at that meeting, so to suggest that we knew that it was fifty five percent, whatever the number he comes up.
So you want to put it on seventy?
Just another sentence, Scott agreed to provide um disturbance percentages for each lot of each lot of that, each lot that South Peak was developed. He may not know if he can't get it from the other two lots.
I think right, that that's fine.
All right, so that's a new sentence at the end of line seven.
And then along that line, we want to put in there, Scott admitted that he, that they should have been earlier once they found violation. He said that.
Is he coming back?
He is coming back.
Right. I think he's planning on doing it again.
Yeah, that good. Um, they were supposed to be providing somewhere in there, we're supposed to have um, the new engineer plan, which he said he was gonna be providing along with an, an amended stormwater permit.
Wait, what, where are you now?
Matt should just, on, on line one twenty-two. I mean, somewhere in here, instead of, that um, they were gonna provide a new engineer plan with an amended stormwater permit.
Were we adding that?
Uh, somewhere around line one twenty-two.
Okay, so between one twenty, after one twenty-three and before one twenty-four, is this gonna be a new bullet point?
Could be, yes.
Alright, and what does it say again?
It should say that Scott agreed that they will provide a new engineer plan and an amended stormwater uh permit for, sorry. Somewhere in here, we also need to put that um, the violation was known about since October of twenty-four. As was in a memo from Ray Corber and the code enforcement office. And that the order selection, your question, and you didn't know anything about it. I asked Karina, and this planning board knew about it. That's it on that one.
Alright, so just, Scott agreed to provide a new stormwater plan.
Amended stormwater.
Amended.
Yeah.
An amended stormwater.
It, it's not an amended stormwater plan because there were no stormwater plans to begin with.
An amended stormwater permit, an amended land use permit.
An amended land use permit, correct.
Amended land use permit, which will include.
To include, right.
Will include stormwater.
Cause the reason he was here was to try to avoid that.
Right, but we.
He said, you know.
Right, he agreed, he agreed to go with that.
Okay, he agreed to go with that for his four lots.
On, right.
Okay, not so, but not for Cedar Circle.
Right.
For the four lots on Cedar Circle being developed by Self.
But he also said that he wasn't sure about, there was one that definitely already had it. I think that one was, it was either.
Holsman already has it.
Holsman already had it, I believe, right. So Kaplan, it must be Kaplan, he thought that he was gonna be dragged into that, he said. And I don't know why he said that, but that, he did say that.
So Scott agreed to provide an amended land use permit to include a stormwater plan for the four lots on Cedar Circle being developed by Self Peak.
Yeah, I can log.
Yeah, my lights are getting faded. Karina, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Okay, alright. And, and then, then after line one twenty-nine, you want a new bullet point that says the violation was known since October twenty-four.
Uh, right, it's the violation was identified on ten twenty-four by Ray Corber. And also noted by Sean, the town code enforcement office.
Can I make a recommendation that that doesn't go right there? Cause that is actually in like the next steps section. I would make it the recommendation that it goes into the first paragraph when you talk about Scott agreed to get the percentages to present at a future meeting and agreed that he should have addressed the issue earlier as a violation was found in October twenty twenty-four.
Well, I, I wanna write, right, I wanna write, who, who bought it as well? You didn't know about it, you said, in October of twenty-four, so.
So Karina, what line, what, what line are you suggesting we put this under?
I'm suggest, I'm suggesting you put it in, um, like, right after line seventy. So it would be a new line seventy-one, seventy-two, where we're gonna say, you know, what, we're gonna address that the lots need to be listed and that Kaplan and Holsman stand alone. And then Scott agreed to get the percentages to present at a future meeting and agreed he should have addressed the issue earlier as a violation was found in October twenty twenty-four by Ray Corber and Sean McGaughan.
There you go. And I wanna put in there that, that the town manager and board of selectmen and planning board are all unaware of it. We're not, they're unaware of it, they're not notified in October. Transparency, that's all. And we can move on to the, about Taylors. Um, we'll bring up in there that I did identify that I may have had a conflict and then Taylor was okay with it, and they pointed out that it was conceptual, so no one from the board had any problems with that. Um, also, I wanna identify that in the background of that one to be transparent. Um, that why it happened. How, how come it came in? Um, and how the error happened? I just wanna identify how the error happened. What was, that it happened with, how it, how it got corrected. That's all. I want that in there so that we have transparency and it's.
It says, it says it was due to clerical error. Permit should have been triggered. Permit should have triggered site plan review because the project exceeded the five hundred square feet.
Okay, when we asked what the clerical error was, couldn't find out who worked or anything like that.
Okay, so, so it was.
I guess he said at a meeting.
So it should not be in the minutes.
What's that, Ogen?
There was nothing said at the meeting.
Well, Tay- Taylor asked who brought it up, and Karina could not or would not answer.
Okay, you wanna put that in the minutes?
Yeah, we put that in the minutes.
Okay, Taylor asked what happened, Karina ignored.
Would not.
Clarified.
Clarified for, there you go.
I think she took responsibility for the clerical error.
Um, also down there, maybe a little, run the lines about one sixty-six. Um, Karina, you said you were gonna see if you could uh get that silver easement plant. Did you ever get that? Did you go find a copy? Cause you said you talked to me, you had seen it during that process.
I did, and I sent it to Taylor.
Okay, but it wasn't in the minutes that you were gonna check on and find it, so I would like to put that in. And other than that, I think I'm done. So, the other question I have about minutes is, so we go through this process and we correct these minutes. We don't get a corrected copy back. And I haven't signed a set of minutes for, probably, I don't know when the last time was, I think that was, I wanted to some type of thing. Um, it's not a legal requirement to sign them. But they recommend that either the board signs them, and it's hard to show that they agree with the changes and that they're final population of, of, of what everyone wanted to change or thought happened at the meeting. Uh, but they, they recommend signing that. So, is there any reason why we can't get, I guess I have to, Karina, is there any reason why we can't get um, between a meeting that we correct the meeting minutes at and before we have are at the next meeting, two weeks later, we can't get a corrected copy?
Well, we have a folder that is uh, a, a folder with planning board minutes that need signatures. I don't know why people or Jade or Carol haven't mentioned that to you, but I imagine there's a stack of them if you're saying you haven't signed them. Uh, waiting for your signature.
I haven't been, I haven't been told that there's minutes down here for me to sign, so I'm, I'm just, I've never, if you go.
I thought you signed some the other day when you came in, Jade gave you some to sign.
I guess, I guess if you go and look online, you'll see that there's a bunch of minutes there from the planning board that have not been signed, but they've been posted.
Yes, that's because we got a.
I'm sure with the sign by me here, the whole planning board, but I think that they ought to be, they ought to be signed as a final call. You know, so that we, we agree.
Yeah, like I said, stereotypically, we would give it to Jim or the previous chairman at the next meeting. I don't know why that hasn't happened, but I can ensure that it will happen in the future.
Okay, that's all, that's what, what I'm asking. So.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as aggressively amended.
Basically, minutes, December tenth, I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we're gonna move on to site plan and subdivision checklist. Did everyone have a chance for review their site plan and subdivision checklist? Yeah. Good night, y'all. But we know. So, look at the applications for site plan review for um, I have four, five, six things up here. Um, where it says, it strongly recommended that they have to meet with town staff to conduct a conceptual review um, with the planning board. That kind of, kinda looks like you, you conducted a conceptual review of the town's staff. Kind of confusing to me, cause it looks like you meet with the town staff and conduct a conceptual review. It does say with the planning board, but I, I don't know why you meet with the town staff, cause it's scheduled. And I, I think I wrote the application, request should be uh, on your earliest planning board board agenda to conduct a conceptual review, what I was gonna put in there.
Paul, are you looking at the checklist or are you looking at the regulations?
I'm looking at site plan, application for site plan and review.
Okay.
The one was handed up. It is.
Okay, I'm just, I was just thought we were looking at the checklist, so I just couldn't find that language on it.
We'll be looking at Paul's, I think, was the application and the checklist, I believe, is, is what could hand it up to me.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you, you can review whatever you want. I was just trying to find that language on the checklist and I couldn't find it.
Um, the other thing I want to change on the application for site plan review was, uh, the undersigned owner may designate an agent. Um, speaks relative surveyor, real estate broker, carry out the application process. Dumb all related communications may be addressed. I would like to put in there, uh, as long as the owner provides a signed letter to the planning board authorizing the other agent. On the checklist number three, where it says submit a digital copy of the print. I did not find that in the site plan regulations, so if we're gonna request that, we probably ought to put it in the site plan regulation. I don't know, it's in there, maybe I missed it, I don't know where I can find it. Number seven, it says a type, extent, and location of existing and proposed landscaping and open space areas indicating what existing landscaping and open space areas will be retained. Um, the open spaces are supposed to be deeded as well, so I don't know if we want a reference in there that, that they're supposed to be deeded.
On all site plans?
Open space is supposed to be deeded.
On all site plans?
Yeah, open space, that, that, in our regulations, also open space to be deeded. If, if you look at the description of uh, the, the open space, it'll say, it tells you that it has to be deeded, you can check it out.
Paul, the open space, on, on the, on the plans though, they, they can't deed the open space before the planning board reviews the plan.
Correct. Off, well, we could say upon completion, but it, it's supposed to say something about, it should say something about that it needs to be deeded cause we've gotten into this discussion a couple times about deeding open space and green space, and it, it's supposed to be deeded, so we can say upon completion. Um. We can say. Yeah, I mean, sub, uh, precedent, subsequent, subsequent to a, subsequent to a approval. That would make sure it's there. Yeah, subsequent to an approval will be fine. And I think that somewhere in here on twenty-four I think there should be a new line That says that. If you, if you're disturbing. Then. Fifty percent, I'm trying to find a way to make sure that. People submit something and say that they're going to disturb less than fifty-five percent and then disturb more. That we have a way to identify what the, what the pre and what the post disturbance was, what the preconditions were and what the. What they were after they do their foundation, so we can not get into this. Oh, uh, we, we put this house here and we had to, we had to disturb more because the foundation, to get around the foundation and back it all, so. I think if someone obviously is going to have to do stormwater, there's no need to do that, but. I, I mean, I'm not getting a fuzzy feeling about just letting South Beach go and say that they're gonna. To trust us now, so. So I think we need to put something in there that, that. Requires them to get, you know, to give us that. I mean, I, I don't know how we do it, definitely open the suggestions, but.
I don't know how you do that at the site plan level.
You can, can we, can we do it? If we at least get a, if they have to provide an existing conditions. So, existing conditions that they're under the fifty-five percent.
Well, I mean, site, I, I think.
Most site plans, or a lot of sites, and some, I should say some, because I've seen. They give you a existing conditions and what it, all it is, the survey shows all of tree species on the lot.
Then that's what I, then that's what I would ask for as part of the checklist is an existing conditions plan.
That way there, when the, after they, if they say we're not going to disturb more than fifty-five percent. And then John goes over or Ray goes over, the engineer goes over and they say, we think they've disturbed more than fifty-five percent. We then at least have a survey of what that was and. Where the trees were and things like that.
Well, I mean, it does say in number seven, the type, extent, and location of the existing and proposed landscaping. And open space areas indicating what is exist, what existing landscape and open spaces will be retained.
But just to be clear, this is site plan review for commercial properties, correct?
Yes.
So, so, but like all of the issues, see the circle aren't, aren't being affected by this.
Oh, they would, because they came on the site plan, but the, the, the.
They didn't come under site plan, they went under subdivision.
They came, right, they came under subdivision and then they had to do, they came in for site plan and review as well. So they subdivided it and to see the circle and then they can have the site plan review. To, um, or, or did they just do that under subdivision?
No, it was only subdivision.
And each residential property owner or their agents submitted their own plan for their, for their lot.
So then maybe underneath subdivision, we need to say that there needs to be an existing conditions done.
I say if, if, if that's your goal, right, we're on the run, we're on the.
I'm, I'm looking for a method to be able.
To fix see the circle.
To, to document, I'm looking at future, we're already, see the circle, it's already done.
Okay, see the circle type instance.
Right.
Need to be fixed on subdivision.
Okay.
I, I would agree with OJ, I think it's more appropriate in the subdivision regulations.
Alright. I'll do that, I'll do that one in the subdivision. Alright, um.
I also think like the, the deeded open space language is probably more appropriate for the subdivision regulations. Than it is the site plan regulations.
Well, that's why I asked, I mean.
Yeah, it could be.
A, a commercial lot, like. Modern man restaurant. What is he gonna deed for open space on that restaurant? Nothing needs to be deeded, correct?
It does, if it's a commercial application, I think you have to look at the ordinance there. And see if there's requirements for open space or green space.
I don't think there's requirements for open space. I think there's requirements for percentage of the lot coverage. But I don't think it has anything to do with open space per se, it's like deeded open space. I think that's more prevalent in the subdivision regulations when you're taking one larger plot of land. And you're supposed to have a percentage of open space based on the original plot of land.
Right. You're right. So we could do that. Do you want to put that one in the subdivision as well?
I would say so.
I just want to make these things clear, because we get into these things and. Um, somewhere in here. Um, I wanted a number, I'm not sure if it's sitting there or not, maybe. Standing right here, but I want something in here to, under the provided. What's for the site plan review checklist, or maybe it goes under subdivision too, maybe both. A note stating that, um, all water and sewer facilities shall comply with the town of Lincoln water and sewer regulations. So that they know that they've got to comply with the regulations. So we don't dare anything more about, we didn't know what hydrants they wanted or what, what class of pipes they want to put in for water or sewer. Town regulations speak to all that and I, I don't know whether. We need something that acknowledges that they're aware of that. And I think a note on the plan would do that.
They have something different out there, stick with it or?
Well, I, I don't know how they, how the hydrants were handled, cream probably looked more about that than I. Yeah, their American darling is what they're doing. I mean, I talked to Nate about most of them, their American darling, but they had over there, they put in differently and. And actually Dave was the one that brought it up, you know, so, but there's, if, if you look at the regulations and, at the town heads, they're pretty. Linky, I mean, they specify pipes, all sorts of stuff, but if we can just put a note on plan. Just make sure that there's a note and that should be just a night and one checklist to make sure that that note's there, is all I'm saying.
Um, I think that's fine and that could go on both site plan and subdivision, because.
Right.
Both of them involve tapping into the town waters.
Right, and, and in regards to that, same thing with, um, either a note on the plan or something that states that all water. Distribution system shall be looped wherever possible. I don't know if you want to put that on subdivision or site plan, but.
It's already in the subdivision.
It's already on subdivision?
Yes.
What do you think about putting it on site plan? Is there a need to do that? I just want to make sure that.
I don't think during a site plan review, you're gonna have a, a, a looping of a water. You know, connection.
Typically, a site plan is one.
One lot.
Three adjacent plots, but it's one project.
So maybe it's just in subdivision and it's already there?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that these things are there, because these are things that we've talked about in the past.
Yeah, no, it's on page five of the subdivision checklist.
Alright, we'll get that next, so that's on subdivision twelve. Rain, is there a need on site plan? And it, it is currently on maybe the subdivisions well. Uh, should there be a bullet point or a number that says that, um, that the town consulting and engineering third party review reimbursed the fee? Should that be, is that something that needs to be identified as a bullet point, so it's checked off or someone realizes it or? Should it be on, should it be on these checklist?
It's on the subdivision checklist, but I have that as a note that I think it should be taken off. Because it's under the site survey map, which I don't think we require on the actual map. The town consulting, engineering reimbursement fee or the town tax map change fee. I don't think it's in the appropriate location. And I don't necessarily think it, I mean, it could be. I mean, we're not asking for a checklist item for the fees associated with the permit filing of the apple, actual application. So it seems to me this is more so like technical merits, technical stuff of the application for the planning board. Not necessarily like in-house administrative stuff.
But don't we want to make sure that it's brought up and being addressed? And, and that they have either, they either have or have not paid it and we know over there. Before it comes to the planning board, it's, it's just another, the planning board has the ability to say, hey, look. You gotta pay these fees, you're aware of it, right? And, and should the checklist item that says that? They, obviously they're gonna go to the staff and, and figure it out, but at least it's. At least it's, it's just another way to be able to make sure they're paying it before it gets to the, the point of need.
Sure, I mean, if you, if the board feels that's an important, you could add a bullet point, just something that says like all town permits. Or fees paid, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't see any harm in it.
Alright. That was all I had for site plan and review. I mean, these things haven't been updated in a little while, so I mean, the site plan review one, I think actually got to twenty-three things. Does anyone else have anything? We'll move on to the, uh, application for subdivision. Be creative, you think, you're the one who wanted us to say that we, or you suggested that we look at these things, so if you have any other ideas. Please speak up because.
Well, I suggested you look at them because I think you were. Attempting to require things that weren't on the checklist in a previous application cycle and that's why I suggested them.
Well, I think one, one of the other things that they should talk about too was to. To make sure that if we wanted, you said we put anything we wanted on checklist to make sure that we had, had information that we want. So.
Correct.
That is, if, if there's things that we may be forgetting or we're not asking for, that we get further down the process, we should be. You know, I didn't find that now rather than wait to get further down through the process, say, oh, we, we should have required that.
Agreed.
Um, and the only ones I had on subdivision were the same things I had, so we have, actually we have three more now. The open space areas, um, deeded for subdivision, um, a plan showing pre-development. So, a, a pre-development plan. And a note stating that the water and sewer. Uh, system shall be looped wherever possible on the plan. And the only other thing I had was again, that the applicants, um, so long as the owner provides a, a signed letter to the planning board. Authorizing, uh, another region. Those were the only changes I had for the subdivision. Did anyone else have any subdivision one?
I don't know if it's the right place for it, but I remember when we were reviewing a prior application, we mentioned ADA compliance. I don't know if we can accept, expect that or if we want to put that here if this didn't really place to go, but.
Can we put that on the, um, site plan, Karen, that, that maybe, uh. Has it been checked for ADA compliance, or is that something that the fire marshal checks on a?
Yeah, I guess it depends on what, you know, what the project was, but I mean, I, I think, I mean, I, yeah, I think it could be a bullet point on site plan. That just, you know, ensures that it meets all ADA requirements.
Alright. Did anybody else have any?
Um, I have on subdivision, if we can just rearrange some things.
Can you hang on? Yep, go ahead.
So like, as I said, if you look at, um, on like page three, when it talks about the site survey map. Well, it's actually on page four, it talks about the consulting fee and then the tax map changes fee. I don't really think that should be on the map itself. I think that should be moved to maybe like the first page. Where it talks about.
Subdivision regulations or are you talking about subdivision?
Talking about the checklist.
Checklist. Okay. So you're looking at page three of the subdivision checklist?
Page four.
Page four?
Yep.
Okay, whereabouts?
And, it's at the top, M and N. Says the town consulting fee and on the tax map change fee. I just don't think that belongs on the location map. I think it belongs in like where kind of like the informational stuff is on the first page. And it kind of bleeds onto the second page. I just think it makes more sense there or under town planner and planning board use only, like something that just says like receive the checks. I just don't think it belongs on the map itself.
That's fine.
And I think that's where, and I think that's where we should put also like the signed letter with the authorization of like the agent or something.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
You know, and you're right on. We take a look on page three F, it says percentage of site and fields and woods, maybe that's where we could put something about, uh.
Pre-development, yep.
A whole precondition plan. Are you writing all this down or did someone just get this from the video?
I'm writing it down. I have a great memory. So does Joe.
Great memory, just not very accurate.
I also think, so on page five, with the proposed open space, you can just add a note that says with deeded note. So that they know that it needs to be deeded in the future.
Under, under H?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that looping is actually already included in this. Um, in that application one.
Right.
Is a biting bad town water ordinance are included in that?
Yes, we did that back in January when we added the looping into the ordinance, we added it into the checklist as well.
Yeah, it is actually.
Okay.
So, so that's in there under. So J is, J one is looped, J three is the requirements of town waters.
So, well, looping would not apply to the site plan regulations. We should make sure that note gets added to. In regulations regarding the town water ordinance.
No, um. Yes, it doesn't say no, it just says required. So, do you water through system, meet all requirements of town like water? There's some regulations with no substitution, um, to say, is there a note on a, provide a note on a plan that states. Your water sewer system meets all the requirements. And. The water system could be created looped, I think we should say something about. Because I, I think the regulation actually says wherever necessary. Wherever it's feasible, sometimes I'd say that, so we should probably use that same word and said there's a, either a note or should it should be note on a plan or should it be? Um, I just want to protect the town, make sure that it's, that, that they're aware of it. If, if they say they're aware of it, that it should be a note on a plan, so it says, we've looked at this and addressed it and their looping has been addressed or something.
Yeah, I would think on the next page where it talks about the final plat, what's required for the final plat. You just add a bullet point that says, you know, water and sewer. you just add a bullet point that says, you know, water and sewer meets town regulations or town specifications on the final plat.
You don't want to say what else? You don't want to say anything about looping? That looping's been considered, because I know there was, you really wanted to get after that looping at one time.
Yeah, but looping is in, already on J, it says.
Right.
Is the water system to be created looped? And then it says, are there any dead ends proposed for the water system? And then it says, if yes, see subdivision regulations, water systems created by, you know.
Shall minimize dead ends.
Right, and if they do have them and they put, put yes, we're going to be aware of it as we're, we're doing, and we decide yes or no.
Right.
But, but they have to declare upfront that they put them on.
I just want to make sure that we've got enough places to go look at this so it brings up a red flag in case it hasn't been considered at all. But then they keep looping the same current. With water they get.
Yeah.
Go on, loop through whatever. All right, did you have anything else, Karina?
Nope, that was it.
Did anyone else have any other?
No.
Well. Good exercise, I guess. Update on whether the packets and what we should talk about this.
Yeah, yes. We talked about that. Whatever, minutes on, not minutes, package just aren't picked up. By Friday. It closed. They'll be dropped off at the police department if people want them there. Okay, so if you haven't picked it up, they'll go over there unless you told town head like, no, you'd rather just keep them here so you can pick them up Monday here.
I'm not reading.
I read.
I'll get it as soon as possible, okay.
But we, there's been some changes a little bit here, because in the past couple of weeks, Karina said them ready like on a Thursday. You know, so that, that gives us Thursday and Friday to give. One of the things I think they're concerned about is they don't want to just drop them over at the police station and no one pick them up because then they're going to travel back and forth and stuff like that. So if we want them available to us at the police station, because I know I work till like, it depends on the day, it might be 5:30, 6:00 and there's no one here, and I don't think Carol should have to stay here for it, so it'd be easier for me to, and I do most of my reading on the weekend. So I would rather be able to get it over at the police station if I can't get it during the week, you know, so that, that's just me. I don't know how everyone else feels, but that's.
Oh, I think they should be, I usually pick them up early, I think. Friday.
But, but if you don't.
If I don't, then I would want them there on Saturday, so I can get them.
Okay, and then if, if you don't pick them up on Saturday, you don't pick them up on Sunday, they're still going to be there by Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday, and you've got to get over there and pick them up.
I think one of the other things to be said too here is, is, you know, we're our board, but we've got to, you know, those people put all the stuff together for us, and if we're not going to take the time to go pick it up and read it, give ourselves ample amount of time to read it before we get here, then it's not, all our effort just wasted now, so most of it's right on the. Yeah, the problem's to me with seeing some of that stuff on a computer is it's so small. I can try and make it bigger sometimes, but I'm not the best at all, should I? So why don't we, I know you recommended maybe your Karina said the last stuff, but maybe we could try it to see how the police thing goes. With the staff and no one starts picking their stuff up, then we'll step back and see what we can.
Right, but just be aware that, that, you know, we, if you don't want them to go over there, that you want to just wait until Monday to pick them up or something. Let the staff know that yours will not go over there. If you do want them to go over there, just know that that's where they're going to be on Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. And then one of the things that we talked about with Boris Luckman is if you don't pick them up by Wednesday and you come here and you don't have the materials, it could be up to either the chair or majority vote whether you get seated or one of the alternates get seated unless you're seated and prepared for the meeting.
I mean, it's only fair, I think, to do, make sure they take a bucket, someone's made packets.
Well, yeah, and I guess the whole whether they'll stay there Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday is kind of to be determined because I also don't think it's fair for the PD to have stacks of paper just sitting in their front lobby waiting for someone to pick up for a week and then they end up having to throw it away, so.
Well, Karina, I think that's why I suggested that we do it as a trial basis and see how it goes. And if it, if it turns out to be a blood balloon, then we'll, we'll readdress it and say, no, we can't do that because everyone's, no one's picking them up, so.
Right, well, and I would, I would kind of, I guess, follow up on OJ is that if, if people don't want their packet going to the PD, please let me know because it's, if only two people want to pick it up on the weekend or three people want to pick it up on the weekend, I'm only going to bring three packets. I'm not going to bring five packets, you know, or seven packets to have half of them sit there. So if you prefer not, just let me know. And also, the goal is moving forward that we will not be having packets be ready at 6:00 PM. This might be a temporary solution to a temporary problem, or I know it's been more than temporary, you know, leading up to this, but the goal in the future will be to have those packets ready Thursday night, Friday morning, so there will be time, at least on Friday, to be able to pick them up.
And maybe that, you know.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be great, but until, until that happens, let's try the police thing and see, you know.
I'd rather have mine picked up here. Is that, Chris, I'd rather pick it up here on Monday.
Okay, Joe, I won't take yours over then. Anyone else, Steve?
I need a, I think, here.
Okay.
I'll pick up mine here.
I'll try and pick mine up, but if I don't, I'd like to be able to get it on the weekend, that's the problem. I won't make it easy to.
We'll take it out of town with us if it's, whatever is.
I'll make every effort to pick it up. I mean, if I don't pick it up, if they're not picked up by Friday, and you, the town's a thing, to be able to bring them over to the police department makes total sense to me.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I feel the same as Paul. I should pick them up on Friday, but if not, I would like to pick them up on Saturday then, so bring them to the police station.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same for me.
Okay.
So four is the most you'd be bringing over to the police station.
And we can go there 24 hours, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three in the morning.
Well, they don't have to.
I'll go if I get in trouble, I'll be like, give me the pass.
If I can't fall asleep, it's 4:00 AM on Saturday.
Yeah. Take her on. Next on the, next on the agenda is. Next on the agenda is alternate term limits, the three terms we have to assign term limits. So Margarita, you're, you were the first one on, so your term will start. What, what year?
This year.
2025. And Sue, your term will start in 2026. Because we, we gotta have alternate, they're going to stagger me stagger.
So she, she's on a one-year term right now.
Sues.
Sues.
Right.
Your three-year, your three-year term, if you choose to stay.
But you're, but you're appointed, so I mean, it really is. It's a new point to start with, but you're, you're appointed, you don't get elected as old. So.
Because when they swear you in, they.
Karina, can we do that? Can we, we're in 2026 and we have got to 2026? Because it's supposed to be staggered, what I read.
No, I think, I think OJ is right. I think technically she's on a one-year term right now, and then 2026 you'll appoint her for a three-year term.
Okay. All right. All right, that takes care of that.
If we, if we get, remind us in 2026.
Yeah. Sign ordinance and mural question. Based on the turning tennis guidelines. I talked to Karina a little bit about this and she's, do you want to talk about this, Karina?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, we're kind of, we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. We're kind of back to what the conversation we had at the last meeting. You know, as you can see from the email, I did ask them, you know, the two questions you asked me to ask them, what if we do nothing? At the time we were talking about it, I didn't realize that we already kind of had language in the sign ordinance that would deal with murals in the wall lettering and wall graphics, which allows them to be larger than just the average kind of commercial sign. So if we just went along with that, we could do nothing and use that to kind of regulate the murals. So that was the first question, what if we do nothing? If we do nothing, we do nothing, essentially, or we follow the wall lettering and wall graphics.
If we do, doing nothing would allow us to follow the wall graphic force on the side.
Correct. And then the second question was, is that if we treated them as a sign and we used, and, and the applicant wanted a larger sign and went to the ZBA to get approval, would that applicant or if the property sold be able to turn that mural into a sign? And as you can see from Jason, his comments, that essentially, yes, it could be turned into a commercial sign at some point, unless we went down the special exception route, but then he also has concerns with that.
That's, that's the danger if we do and the danger if we don't, but.
Right.
You know, it's out of the DVA, but it's taken on it. It's probably, it's told, it's, it's pretty good time, it's coming for different, different, right.
Didn't he men, did he mention something about that, Karina? That I, I thought he said something about, we might be able to do something through the ZBA and have, have it.
Yeah, we could, we could put it as a special exception versus a variance, which a special exception doesn't necessarily run with the land. He did say though, that we would have to caution this, that if someone came in to the ZBA for a special exception for a mural, and we've had a history of denying variances for signs to be enlarged, then someone could challenge it, that we weren't treating the sign ordinance consistently.
I would, I would think that doing nothing and using that the ordinance that we have would probably be the better way to go and see what kind of challenges we get, so to speak, if we get any. Because most people are going to come in for murals. I don't know that the kind of change right off to, from mural to a sign, you might have someone want to change a sign to a mural, but I don't know.
But once they were thought about, that you might have so much square footage and built a size, you've got all the time, all the time for this, and you go, wow, wow, we can't put a mural.
But we can, we can regulate based on size and location and quantity.
We already have quantity.
But, you know, we've all talked about this. The text, if you have to identify it by what it says, then, then we can't really regulate that. So, but our ordinance allows us to regulate based on size, location, quantity, so we can, we could do that and still be safe. Or as long as it didn't have any vulgar language or whatever it was, is that right?
Yeah, certainly, things that we can regulate.
So as a fourth thing, we'll leave it as is, and let people who want to come in for murals, come in and we can identify them based on the current regulation.
So then if a business already has its allotted sign percentage, they would not be allowed to have a mural?
Correct.
Unless they go to the CPA, or is that out of the question?
They can always go to the CPA, but they would have to plead their hardship to say why. But they could, they could say, well, we want to take down a sign for a mural.
Couldn't we put a provision under this wall lettering, wall graphics paragraph that says applicants
can go to the.
Permission. Go to the ZDA to get a variance, to request, to request a variance for the maximum square footage.
Maximal allowable size.
Okay. Maximal allowable number of signs and square footage.
Yeah, I really hate, yeah.
Just to say that they can go and do that.
Right, just so they're aware they can do that.
We have to be aware that then the ZBA could say that for any sign. Again, this limits it from the residential areas, but.
But that's what the ZBA is there for, right, to take a look at the ordinance, just like you said.
Right, and, and someone could go in there with a beautiful mural and tells where they want to put it in five years, someone could paint over it with a new sign or mural that says, you know. You know, that it's, it's risky either way.
They must be maintained or taken down. We had a sign.
Yeah, we have that in there. I just want to see, I mean, the only reason this all came up is because we've had requests for people who want with mural stuff. It's been, probably a year since we.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if you look at the one request that we've had and the one location of where it is, it's on that mill building facing the river.
They were coming, they, they want the whole wall more, that's why they were coming in. It's not whole wall, they want more.
That was the first one they were looking at, that if, if we change this to, instead of going to the ZDA, they can go to ZDA and get that facing the back and put up, you know, what they want. But again, in five years, someone else may own the building, it may not like it, it may change it.
Would there be a provision that says, if, you know, like whatever image is there has to stay, or not that has to stay there, but if it, if the image changes, then you have to go back to the ZBA to get another area.
That's, that's, that's not being content neutral.
Right.
I mean, yeah, you could do it. I think we'd be challenged.
When we say that, and I don't know what you're saying, we say something about to change, change of use, to change the use, one's a thing, you need to go back to.
Right, so, yeah.
To change the, the use of it. Or the use could be from a mural to a sign. To change the.
Then we have to define what a mural is, define what a sign is, to give it effects.
And that's based on content.
Yeah.
So you're not.
Well, I, I don't know.
Well, it could be because based off of the fact it was a wall. Right, so like, if, if you get rid of it and stretch back into a wall, then it's a wall, it's no longer a mural or a sign.
You're being all quiet, Karina.
Yeah, I'm staying out of this one.
Come on, I mean, we, we want to be able to help everybody, but we don't want to come back and play this to the backside and turn into a big sign that says, eat any jokes on Joe's car. But.
Joe cuts one, maybe we should.
I don't know, yeah, great, Julie.
I, I like either leaving it like this, which is going to really limit any murals because someone's going to have to give up their assigned space to have a mural, or doing it with this, with a, with a special exception that goes before the ZBA. Do you know what that, 97% of the people who come before us and say, you want, you know, the change comes is that we want to put up this mural or do this, that they're probably going to stick by their word, it's probably going to be there.
But just that's that one person.
That one person might buy the building and change it into something different that more resembles what we think of as a sign.
And, and then everyone else will say, you let them do it, so here I go.
Well, no, they would still have to come in for a special exception, go through the process, and then we can say, no, we got screwed once, we're not doing any more of those. So, I mean, the ZBA loves.
If we leave it the way it is currently, then they're only allowed so many signs per year. So if they really want a mural, does it make sense to just say, look, if you really want a mural, you got to consolidate your signs, so you can have a mural? I mean, I think if you leave it open to, I think, um, based on going to the ZBA, and the ZBA says, oh yeah, that's okay, then we could be sitting there with a lot of egg on our face. They, they could be sitting there with, the town could be, because it's gonna say, you let these people do this, now everyone else is gonna want to start doing it. I mean, I don't know how many cases are gonna go to court, you know, no one knows until you first start things, but we want to be able to help people, but we don't want it to be taken out of context either, so. It's every one thing.
I mean, I don't think there's gonna be a big swarm of people coming in and wanting to, to put up murals.
You know? Cause when they came in and sat there, they said that they had quite a plan, they, they had a group together that was looking at it, it wasn't just murals, they were gonna put up figurines and art stuff and.
Talking about different types of art, like this sculpture or something like that. I, I don't think there's like Randy goes plans like being developed in this town about cheap sculpture garden and stuff. I think they had eight plans, but eight mural at this point, um, that they were thinking of, and actually they have one concept, I believe, uh, possibly over those woodstrokes.
Well, because we can always change it, we can always, this has to go before the town meeting.
Correct.
So if we put it before the town meeting, the, the way that all, all.
The ZBA.
The ZBA, and, and people don't vote on it, then it'll, you know, it'll go away.
And if we get screwed, we hate it, we can change it the next year.
Right. Okay, so what was the consensus that leave it and? No, it's not, no consensus, I think, one of OJ's saying, I think I agree with him, is that we make it the least restrictive, that's not least restrictive, we're going the least restrictive path and let the ZBA handle it. And, and then if people want to, it's gotta go town meeting, so they vote on that town meeting or not. And as OJ said, if they vote yes on a town meeting, we end up with murals that are turned into signs, we can say, hey, wait a minute, this is, and we gotta turn this back now. Does that make sense?
Okay. Going along the road today, I'm back, but.
Okay. What do you think, Karina?
Well, I guess I'm questioning, is that a change in the zoning language? Or is that just telling them if they want it, they have to go to the ZBA?
I think.
I think we gotta, we gotta tell them that. I think it's a change.
I would say, oh my God, I ran out of battery.
So much talking today.
I know.
Do we have any, do we have any batteries in this room?
Yeah, they're all, all the chargeable ones back there. Um, I would say in the wall, in the, um, sign ordinance, under T, wall lettering slash wall graphics, we add in a provision that, um, overs, oversized signs, um, or exceeding the number of signs can be handled, um, by a, a special exception to the zoning board. And as people come in and want a mural, we suggest that they treat it as an oversized sign, but the ZBA, now if someone wants to come in for the ZBA for an oversized sign, it's, it's, they can do that too, but I think, hope, but the ZBA would say no. But if they say yes, that they think the sign is great, I guess that.
We can always change, go back and, and.
And say, yeah, we changed our line, we don't want to do this anymore. We're putting our trust in the ZBA.
Right.
Then you're doing, you don't want it anymore, you need to pay down what they already put up, correct, it's great about the fact.
But you can stop going in front of them. Everyone's still.
Created some town, durable.
Yeah, we can draft some sort of language and I'll obviously have Jason look at it, right, before we bring it to town meeting, but yes, it sounds doable. Um, and I have to pop off for a little bit, I don't know how much longer you guys are going, I'll come back on, uh, when I'm done. Yeah, okay.
So Karina, we have, uh, we've October first. So we've changed site plan, we rechecked the subdivision, um.
We've done that, right?
Right.
So we're not doing that on October first.
Right, October first is gonna be a very busy meeting.
Okay, and then November fifth?
No, October first is an off-schedule meeting for you, October eighth is gonna be your very busy meeting. So are you still doing the work session on October first?
Um, probably not, based on the fact that we, we handle these two tonight. Um, are you still okay with the November fifth?
Yes.
Okay. Um, training?
So October first is free night? People go to the police station.
Karina sent everyone, oh, actually.
Karina, to answer your questions, I don't think we're gonna be here too much longer.
Yeah, I found something of it. Sorry, sorry. Sorry, forgot to bring it up, are you really? We had a memo from, um, Sarah from Dubai and King about, um, regulations review. Um, I, I found this in my file of stuff that I had. It, it was full points from site plan regulations and subdivision regulations. Um, I don't know if you get that?
I don't think so.
Everybody, I think everybody got it, if you're on the list.
Is it in the package?
Uh, it's not in the package, but this time.
No, it's from a long time ago.
I mean, if, if that's still in the files, can we, huh? If that's still in the files, we put that back out and we probably ought to let people look at it, I mean, cause she had, I mean, a pretty lengthy list of, of.
Yeah, we should, we look at that, it's from Sarah?
Yeah.
All right, I'll find it later.
She just had a pretty lengthy list, and I know OJ had some things on the rules and procedures that we wanted to do, so maybe we should keep, maybe we should keep the meeting on the first and do the recommendations from, uh, D and K on the regulations review and do, um, the rules and procedure. Karina, could you see if Jade or someone can find that, if I can give it to you?
Yeah, I, I have it, I'll be able to send it out.
If you can send that out.
And when you do the regulations review from, uh, Dubai and King, can you, um, there's also some, we've in-house have been keeping a tracking sheet of stuff that we would like to maybe have the board review as far as zoning changes for the upcoming year.
Can you send those too?
Yeah, can we send those too, yeah.
Yeah, send, send those too, and then we'll do that, sorry, OJ, we'll do that on the first.
No, I think that's a good idea to handle, get these two things.
Well, I'm.
Right, because you will hold the public hearing starting in November on the changes to the zoning.
Right. I mean, if we don't get through them all, we, we make some changes, it would be good.
At least get a head start on it. All right, I really have to pop off, but like I said, I'll come back on and see if you're still on, if not, just don't ask me any more questions until I, I guess, speak up.
The only thing I had was those, Karina gave us, she saw, but, um, she gave us a, what her plan was for the planning and zoning administrator, and gave us a page. So I'm good with it. I gotta tell you, I, I applaud what she's doing that way, but I gotta, I, I, I think we need a planner. I am, I, I, I don't know what, how this works, what type of abilities the planning board's gonna have, but I think we need a planner, I really do. We're just with construction with the amount of, I mean, Karina's getting busier all the time, but all, all the staff is, everybody's, I mean, but we need some more professional help that's got schooling, education, maybe a little civil engineering, maybe a little business behind them, maybe, you know, that, that can really lead us when we get lost, because it's not fair for Karina to be here for, for a slep in meetings and then have to be here for planning, planning board meetings, and, you know, to have someone that has that kind of experience, to me, is pretty important. I don't know what everyone else feels, but.
We have the budget to hire a planner?
I don't think we should worry about, and you, won't give me say this too often, but I think we should worry about, like, I think we should worry about what we're gonna get first. See if we can get somebody, I mean.
We are in a money, a budget for.
The looking, the looking that I did to, a, a, anywhere from, I don't believe the low part, but they were saying eighty-five thousand to like a hundred and fifty thousand. But then you, you know, you're looking for qualified people to do that, so. But I wouldn't do it unless we could get somebody qualified, you know, someone that has, and I, and I and the research.
Tell them to have to get ninety-five thousand, you know, and people are talking about already.
Yeah, as far as the budget goes, it, it's highly unlikely that we're gonna find someone and onboard them, um, much before, uh, January first anyway.
Right.
You know, if we find the perfect person and they're ready to start December first, okay, we'll have one month of unbudgeted salary, plus we, we still have some of Carol's, I'm not sure when, 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 um, pay is gonna end and vacation and time off and whatever else you guys approve, but anyway.
And, and, and the town of Barrington, um, they, their knowledge and skills and abilities had post second undergraduate municipal planning and land planning, civil engineering and related fields, five years of experience in regional and local planning. They had that, there was some, some ability to develop, uh, familiar with jig, geographical information systems, um, code enforcement, uh, knowledge of engineering practices, construction techniques, and it was something that said, there was one that said the plan also serves as professional staff to the planning board, there was one that said, um, when I looked up city planner, they were talking about, um, bachelor's degree in civil environmental engineering, business-related accounting. Also said that they should be certified through the American Institute of Certified Planners, or a member of the American Planning Association, and at least a good number of years in, uh, planning experience, there was another one that said, that they needed to be, have a master's or bachelor's degree or program accredited by the planning, uh, planning accreditation board, and that they would have some public administration skills, environmental studies, civil engineering and economics, analytical skills, but I, I think those things are things that, that we really, I think we, we really need professionals that has those, and I think we should look to see if we can find them, because I really think without the town point, I, I gotta tell you, I still hear, you know, it's much like study stuff, I don't understand all of it, you know, and it's, it's tough to go through it all, try and figure it out. And we rely on staff to do that, and to me, the staff is not schooled, is that's why we're educated in it, or whatever, you know, they, they don't have the support mechanism of the degrees in planning and engineering. I mean, we have Paul Peralta as a planner and an engineer.
Yeah, I didn't even know.
I know, but he, but he, but he had, he had some engineering background, so he, he did it a lot of that, you know, as much as.
Engineer slash.
As much as.
Didn't have an engineering license.
As, as much as that. Did you go to engineering, you gotta be.
He's giving me all kinds of stuff, so I call the Congress to go over it.
And then we have Mark Resnick, you know, I mean, so, then, then we had, um, there was a couple of the guys that we had that worked, that had planning and engineering background, you know?
Matt Henry.
Matt Henry.
And
we can talk about.
The one who cut Rocky and I fired.
Well.
Oh, that was, uh, the two. I got my duty, so.
What, um, how many does the plan go through for hiring, say, is there a budget for senior recruiter?
I don't know, I mean, I.
Typically, we, uh, would advertise this in a, um, in, in the realm of public officials that they would see it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we might draw it in the union leader, but, but on municipal associations website and then other websites that deal with, and I don't even know what they are, but, you know, professional, um, governmental employees. There are websites that specifically are geared to that. Again, because no one's gonna be a planner, or I should say, no, it, it, it's highly unlikely that someone's gonna have a, a planning background working for a private company, because really in the public realm.
But you could hire a, a, a headhunter to maybe look for a planner that knows of one, because a lot of times, I, I know my son, for example, he, he does have headhunter stuff, but what they do is they, they go off and, and someone will say, I'm really not happy with Brian, I'd really like to find a job, and they, and they, they kind of say, well, who would you like to be? Oh, I'd like to be a little bit, oh, guess what, we know, you know, so they, they do that, I mean, and they move you around sometimes.
We've not, we've not hired, it's my realm here, it's not hired a headhunter for, for job applicant.
Because it sounded like what you're saying, Paul, is like, this, this is looking for more support person behind the planner, and, yeah, my daughter works for tech systems and she, that's exactly what she does, and they specialize in making relationships with companies or with the town, and then maybe say, what do you need, and then they even have their dealers out for different people that are looking. So I would think that there's, but there, there's a cost, you know, that on top of that.
Yeah, I know, and, and, and there's no guarantee to say how long they're gonna last either, but we, Lincoln's, well, I mean, you take a look at what's happening in Lincoln now, and just think about the changes that are gonna happen when South Peak really does happen, when, I, I mean, excuse me, Blue Mountain does do that whole thing over there, and where South Peak is going, they still have seven hundred or so more units over there, I mean, who knows where the next hotels coming from?
But South Peak is giving you a three hundred eight, you know, how deep that is.
Yep, that's right, but I mean, and, and then there's the town wants to do things, if we had a real planner that has some engineering experience or civil engineering or something like that, might be able to help and, and have other resources to do campus world, you know, that could be a project for them, instead of trying to have Karina do all of that, you know, on top of doing administrative stuff. I mean, I think we're, I think, and this is not my forte either, but I think the town, when I look at it, the town has great middle management people, but at the top, there's very few. You know, and I think that the planning needs to have somebody that thought has, has skill. I think someone needs to, there needs to be someone that thought that has skill and education.
There's gotta be a company that specializes in that, because you think about that other area that have like just exploded, and the explosion kind of stopped, and those people that you're describing would be possibly working for the next.
Take a look at that, what government did they lay off tons, tons of people, I don't know if any of those, I don't know what they had for backgrounds or anything like that, but I don't know.
There must be, there must be some schools that either specialize or have that as a. Talk, we could talk to them, um, but I'm saying something, we could send, uh, a farm or something and, and stuff. I mean, it's just an app, and I, I, like I said, I think we.
Would you have to go to a budget process for that to, um?
Yeah, we'd have to include in the budget, I mean, you know, what we thought we would want to do and, because you can't overexpend the line when it comes to payroll that much, I mean, you, you could, you could put an amount of money in there, you could put two hundred thousand dollars in there and only spend a hundred and twenty-five or eight, but it, you know.
Could this be something that we bring up at this town meeting?
Well, I think it'll bring up town meeting, I think you want to have it already in the budget, say, look, the planning budget is up because we're gonna, we're looking for a qualified, educated person to assist at the top level of, of experience, similar to a town manager, to alleviate some things that she won't have to be able, that she's taking on, and that we can then have someone that can help us on a more regular basis without bothering Karina all the time. And, and, and do it that way, I mean, just, you think, just think of the money that we spend away, just, I don't know, that, that's my thoughts, anyway, I, I don't know what anyone, anyone else thinks, but we should be thinking about it.
I, I'm not disagreeing, but just pointing out that I don't think that. I I'm not disagreeing, but just pointing out that I don't think that the the planner is going to. Save us money that we don't have to, you know, hire an engineer, that I think that a full-time planner would just bring more. Knowledge and input into the planning process.
And I think, right, I I would agree with that.
Yeah, I I mean, I.
But I also.
Never go through this with the notion that we're gonna save money.
But I think there are probably areas where they could. I guess it's by attrition that they save money, because Karina can then be doing other things while this person's doing this, that she we. She took on, and as a result, she's more productive, that, you know, and doing what she's doing, you know what I mean, you know what I'm saying, so, and 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 that like. It's a cost efficiency type of thing that you're looking at, but at the end of the day. You know, I mean, I think there needs to be another real professional and that handles that portion of it, because right now, it it just Karina.
So being an engineer like that, Sarah lady.
Sarah, yeah, from Dubai and King, she was, so she was in Belmont. She was in Belmont as a planner in Belmont. And she decided she wanted, she's an engineer, she decided she wanted to be an engineer more than she wanted to be a planner. That's kind of sort of what happened, because she used to work with my wife in Belmont, but so the knowledge pools, I'll get out, but.
I think this is a good discussion, I've played with Karina and made sure like. We have enough work. Which I mean, we feel like, we do, right?
What Carol's office used to look like, not that I know it would be like that, but. It's the kind of stuff that has to be organized and.
Yeah.
Put down fires.
It's it's a big task, and not only just dealing with the public, but they're gonna deal with all of us. Or the planning board and trying to educate us all the time on, well, this is what, where you were, they they need to know the history. They need to look back and they need to know who they can pull from and get stuff done, so.
I think this would be a good time to bring somebody like that on too, because we're like going over the master plan and we're like looking at the past, looking at the future, so like. I also found a website that's American Planning Association, that you can just post a job on.
Right, that's the kind of stuff, we 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 would do that, right?
Yeah, I just think, like I said, I, I think we're middle management, okay, I think our. I think could use a little expert help. All right, go ahead, Joe.
If you wanna go to work on a payroll for all of the guys.
Does anyone else have any comments they want to make about that?
My other thought is, um, is it two separate jobs, is the planner a different job than an administrator?
Yes.
So then we'd be hiring for two different.
Well, we hire a planner, and then our Jade is currently our our says planning administrator, I think. Land use coordinator, so so that would work, right, right, so so you have your little Jade is the middle management, and then you have your your planner. You know, it's like, you have Karina, and then you have who's underneath Karina, um.
Jane.
Jane. Sorry, that's, yeah, and then you have to, you know, the different departments, so.
Well, my two cents on the issue would be that you need a planner, you need a hiring person who really has a handle on how it's built. And then the rest would fall in, I think, a lot easier, and uh, I don't think there would be so many issues with things. I just think it would work out, but we we got people who really are passionate in doing what they can. But they may be overwhelmed with things, so I think with someone who is actually a planner and knows what they're doing. Would be uh definitely a problem, yeah.
Karina, comments?
Honestly, I will bring your concerns or thoughts back to the board as quickly. Um, but I don't know. Wanna wait till November first, do we uh have a discussion, direct discussion with Karina?
We can, you know, if if the board wants, if the two boards want to be together to discuss it, I think that's, you know, that. As the why we think it, you know, and or argument, because Karina would be there to maybe get. Everybody together if you want, for one meeting, doesn't matter to me, I don't care, I just.
I think sooner rather than later, if she's already posting that job, but you don't want a lot of effort.
Well, I know she's posting that other job or hot yet.
Yeah, and I don't.
I think she just gave us that.
That was a. Proposal, I don't think that's gone to Frank.
I think we should start, start anew, all right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All's a favor.
I'm already.
We're gonna need a captain first, both.
Didn't want her to think that she was still here.
I think we should cover bar two, once it goes past actually hours, next.